Okay, thank you. This is the meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board of, let's see, today is the twenty eighth of April twenty twenty-two. And we have a forum, so I think we'll get started. And if we're lucky, George will join us shortly. But we have a forum, so we can get moving. The the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes for March thirty-first.
May I like to read the protocol for virtual meeting?
Oh, go ahead.
You. I know some of you have heard this a thousand times already, but we do need to read this into our minutes. Welcome to planning board, everyone, and we're all glad you're here. We keep these meetings respectful and orderly. So as such, we have some protocol that we'd like to read. I'm going to share my screen briefly here for everyone. There we go. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and the board, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. More about this can be found on our website, and the link is listed here, but if you miss it in this short period of time, I'll be happy to send it to you. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in our Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These are going to be upheld during our meeting. All remarks, testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against another person. Obsessive, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise improves the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants shall are required to sign up using your real name, not a pseudonym. And and currently, we're asking folks to only that if you're a member of the public, you can only use your audio, no visual. And when we get to public speaking, you will have three minutes to speak. If you do have any problems with technical issues, you can contact me through the Q and A. And just so you know, our board members are not reading Q and A or chat. They should not be. That is not for content. It's for technical issues. I am watching it as closely as I can, and I'll answer any technical questions that you have at any time. If you start using that as a format for content issues, you will get a warning because that is not what we need to do on on there. And if you continue to do that, which I hope you don't, but if you do, I'm going to have to give you another warning and ask John to maybe address it. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Cindy. Oh, and we have George with us now, so great. All right. Not only do we have a forum, but we have full attendance tonight, so that's nice. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is whether we wish to approve the minutes of March thirty-first and April seventh, our previous meetings. I note that there was some concern expressed by Laura Kaplan about how how some of it was reported. And so I think we have two questions in front of us in that respect. One is that Laura was not a member and not present in those meetings. So the question is, to what degree her vote is appropriate or essential? And the second is the substance of her comments. And I'd be open for any thoughts on that.
I do want to let the board know that I did, after Laura's comments, I did send the minutes to David and and Peter, they did review it. I got some comments back from David. He reviewed that area, and so he did send me some edits back since he was a part of that meeting. And I've entered them into the minutes. They're at the very bottom of key issue. I think it's key issue two. And they are online, and so they are available for you to look at in the packet.
So I think it's just Hella should tell us what what how we handle. My experience has been that if you weren't at a meeting, you don't vote on the minutes, but maybe we have some other processor approaches that Hella could share with us.
Yeah, so so generally, you know, there is a rule that states if you abstain from a vote, it's going to be recorded in the affirmative. And there is a couple of exceptions, and one of them is that you don't have to vote on minutes for a meeting that you did not attend. So our three new board members who didn't attend do not need to vote on those. But there's also nothing that prevents you from voting on them. It's it's to approve whether or not you think they accurately reflect the meeting. And and you could have an opinion about that. So it's it's also fine for you to participate. Cindy, since you did make some changes, and it sounds like they weren't reflected necessarily in a meeting unless they're exactly what what Laura described in her email. Maybe you can describe them to the board so that they know what they're voting on.
Absolutely. Let me pull them up. Give me two seconds to do that. Okay. David added, under key issue two, he said, David Ensign echoed John Burstall with respect to an to an approach on parking overall, we approved of the plan. And then he said, during further discussion of what additional language with respect to the airport could be added, David Ensign discouraged the board from asking for any added language that would presume a future strategy for the airport. Working on airport strategy at that level could delay adoption of this version of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. And for that, and for now, a placeholder would be appropriate. And then Peter Vitale agreed with David Ensign and John Burstall agreed with this approach.
Okay, I I can say that I would like to delay approval of these minutes until I've had a chance to look at it in writing and consider the change. I would defer to the majority on this, but that's my opinion.
I'm with either. Laura bringing it forward, and I think if other folks feel strongly about delaying it, that's fine. You know, I agree that doing a side by side of Laura's notes and whatever. Wasn't there also an email that said something to the effect of that it was passed on to Peter and on to David, and they approved Laura's language? Or what was that?
Yes.
Yeah, but but then the comments that made it in aren't verbatim.
No.
Okay, so yeah, so so maybe I I think it'd be fine to do either one. I don't think it's going to be huge substantive change. I trust Cindy's judgment. I suspect that when I read them side by side, I'll be fine with it. So I'd be fine with approving it, but I'm also fine with delaying. So I also defer to the majority.
Okay, I think Sarah had some thought, too. If I understood her facial expression correct.
I just whatever. I don't I don't particularly care.
Well, I Laura.
So I'll just say, I I don't need to vote on this. You know, I I was not a planning board member at the time that this meeting took place, even though I was present as a member of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan Working Group. I attended that meeting. I watched the meeting. And so my concern was just to have David and Peter comment because they are no longer planning board members. They didn't get to review the notes, and I thought that there was a piece left out there that seemed to be important to them. And so the language that Cindy put into this draft was suggested by David over email. And I think the other board members were not copied on that in order to try to avoid a serial meeting. So I'm fine with what David wrote. I'm fine with whatever. However, David wants to represent his own comments. I'm not trying to, you know, write it for him or for anybody else. I just am glad that he had the opportunity to weigh in on those meeting minutes. And I it doesn't matter to me whether we vote on them tonight or wait until people have a chance to read them and feel comfortable. I think that's a good idea. You know, my concern is just that it's an accurate record of what happens.
Right. Okay, any well, I again, I would like to read it. Oh, Mark, you have your end up, yeah?
Yes, I I just I support accuracy in the minutes. And in this particular case, I think a delay in the approval to allow a reading of the minutes so that everyone is comfortable would be in order. So I would support that, John.
Which night are these minutes for, Cindy?
They were for the thirty-first, and what's normal procedure for everyone to send me their edits without sending them to the entire board? Because we don't want a serial meeting happening. We're in danger of we don't want that to happen. So the way David sent me his remarks is totally fine. Just so you know.
I do have those remarks pulled up. If folks want to read it real quick, it's one short paragraph. If you want to do that now or delay and read them on your own time.
I I think, well, I would rather read it on my own time than do it on.
I move to separate out the two sets of minutes. I move to table the minutes from what was that, May thirty-first?
March.
March, thank you, whatever month we're in, from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. But I would like to move forward with the minutes for the other nights that we are that are in question. Do I have a second?
Mark, you're it. Okay. Very good. So all right, we have a proposal to approve the minutes of I can't keep the dates straight.
April seventh.
April seventh and and table the minutes of March thirty-first until we meet again. All in favor? Looks like unanimous approval.
Hella, do you need it to be auditory?
I don't. I I think in our quasi judicial and public hearings, we have it to be auditory. Cindy, do you remember if it has to be for all items?
I.
Okay, Lisa.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
ML.
Hi.
Laura.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
And I vote aye. So that's how we'll deal with this. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move ahead with a we don't have any call-ups in front of us tonight. We can move ahead with a public.
Do we still need to approve the other minutes?
Oh, I see. I thought that was done as part of.
I think our motion was to set aside the April, the April ones and to approve the.
Okay, that was my own language, and I'll trust you that that's what I said.
Okay, so that means we do need to explicitly approve the the other set of minutes. Or April seventh then. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to regarding those minutes.
I make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Mark, okay, seconds. I guess we need to do a roll call on this one, too. ML.
I.
Sarah.
I.
Laura.
Yes.
Lisa.
I.
George.
I.
Mark.
I.
And I vote aye. So they are accepted. Okay. And we don't have any dispositions or call-ups in front of us tonight, so we'll move ahead to a public participation section. If any member of the public wishes to address the board, now is the time on any issue except what we're dealing with in public hearing tonight, which is the concept plan review for thirty-eight, twenty-five, and thirty-six, seventy-five Walnut Street. So I would invite anyone who wants to address us to do it now on any anything except that concept plan review.
And this will also include the matters item, which is the curbside management.
Oh.
Land, am I right on that? Yes. Parks and Recreation Master Plan, excuse me.
That's right.
So much scheduling today. I apologize. It's the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, if you want to speak on that as well under Matters. And we do have a person who has raised their hand. It's Kurt Norbeck. Kurt, I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes to speak. You are you should be able to speak now.
Great, thanks, Kurt Norbeck, seven seven seven, Dellet Avenue. I'm speaking for myself. I have two planning-related comments about the Parks and Parks and Rec Master Plan. I sent you an email about this, and I hope you received that. First, as you notice from the maps in the draft plan, East Boulder has a shortage currently of walkable parks. This is not so much problem now, but it will become much more of one as we add housing under the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. What the area does have is Belmont City Park and the bike and dog parks that are across the street from it. There's also a large area of undeveloped parkland just east of Belmont City Park. To me, it doesn't make sense to add on to the existing park. The marginal benefit of that seems pretty small. It would create what I think of as the big box store of parks. A big box store is something most people drive to, and it sucks the energy away from smaller local stores. And in 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 large Belmont City Park seems similar to me. So I'm proposing that we exchange that undeveloped land for more smaller parks distributed around East Boulder so that ideally, all the future residents of the area will have one within walking distance. So that's the first point. The second point relates to parking at parks facilities. Currently, that parking is nearly all unpriced. But that doesn't mean that it doesn't have a cost, as you know well. It has a maintenance cost and a capital cost. By providing unpriced parking, we're subsidizing driving, which is contrary to our climate action and transportation goals. So I urge you to recommend that we move towards a pricing system for parking at Parks and Rec facilities that is equitable and that accounts for cost and market value. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can mention that I believe all of us have seen your the emails that you referred to. So thank you for them also.
Great, thank you.
Are there any others who wish to address planning board tonight?
Right now, I don't see any hands, but we'll give it another five seconds. Yes, we do have another person.
Okay.
It's Lynn Segal, and you have been unmuted, so we'll give you three minutes, Lynn.
And and leading segueing from what Kurt said, the open space that the Parks and Rec having charges for people would affect that diagonal plaza development if the people that that are living in Boulder Housing Partners can't swim in the swimming pool there. Instead, they're driving or riding their bikes. There is also, you know, my brakes get worn down on my bike. I drive my car once every six months. But the brakes, the tires, there's wear and tear for moving period. And if you've got a swimming pool right there, and why is that being used as an excuse to go along with Bill Holley and Coburn to to, you know, the rec passes, the rec passes also are are they don't come free. There's more people using them. If those people are using that swimming pool there, then that relieves some of the stress on our parks and open spaces. You saw in the paper two days ago. We're understaffed, under maintenance for those facilities. What you need to do, planning board, is you need to stop this perpetual allowance and encouragement of begging for indulgences from developers in Boulder. No more begging. No. What they need is prescriptive guidelines. That makes your job, your meetings, a lot shorter because they just have to meet regs. You know, there how how much is going on here in this town? It's utterly ridiculous. Flatiron's Business Park and and the acceleration of the expenses in this town and the constant catching up. And yet, height restrictions, all these indulgences, density, open space, you know, giving away open space that's supposed to be on the development, then they're going to use our open space, which is already three hundred million in deficit on maintenance and operations. And so let's see, the parking reductions, all of these things are are a benefit to the developer and should not be given. And and there's a revolving door issue going on. No, Bill Holley and Boulder Housing Partner, these are not free. Boulder Housing Partner is not free. The Lytech funds come with all of this infrastructure that is not met, all of all of this money, unfunded liabilities, the City of Boulder absorbs in the open space and in the stress on our you know, of the population on our infrastructure. And it's not free. And so don't even think of CU South of adding insult to injury. Don't even dream of it. Um, let's see, what else did I have here? You know, I'm not trying to insult the good work that you do here. Okay, I'm I'm going to the process that is flawed. The process is flawed. You're working very hard, getting very little done. It's not that you're not, you know, working hard. It's that the whole system is set up to fail. So.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. You can go down to the bottom, and you should see a raise hand function. And you'll have three minutes to speak. And John, I just don't see anyone else raising their hand tonight.
Okay, then we'll move ahead. Thank you. It's the public participation section of this meeting to a close. So I've already noted that we don't have any call-ups or dispositions to talk about tonight. So we'll move ahead with our public hearing item, which is a concept plan review and comment for proposed redevelopment of a five-point-seventeen-acre property located at thirty-eight, twenty-five, and thirty-six, seventy-five Walnut Street. This is reviewed under case number L U R two zero two two dash zero 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 six. And I'll ask staff to take it away at this point. And just for the sake of the public and perhaps new members of planning board, you might describe what the objective and purpose of a concept review is.
We'd be happy to. So thanks very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. Shabnam Bista has served as the case manager on this application. She'll be presenting the analysis this evening, which will include the purpose of concept plan. Shab, take it.
Good evening, everyone. Just start with sharing my screen. Okay, please let me know if you're seeing the presentation.
Yes, we are seeing it.
Okay, good evening, planning board members. For tonight's discussion, I'll be presenting I'll be presenting a project to demo and demo the existing manufacturing warehouse building at thirty-six, seventy-five and thirty-eight, twenty-five Walnut Street. And we developed the property with a two-story building up to fifty-five feet in height. The development is for Life Sciences Building with multiple tenants. And for tonight's discussion, I will quickly go over the information provided in staff's detailed memo, including the purpose of the concept plan and review guidelines, the existing site conditions, surrounding context, a description of the proposed concept, as well as some key issues for discussion. So the purpose of a concept plan is to determine the general development plan for a particular site and to help identify key issues in advance of a site removal. The step is meant to be a dialogue between the applicant, staff, planning board, and the community, and it's providing feedback early in the process to the applicant. The discussion and comments for tonight should be based on topics under the concept plan criteria and the general development plan, which includes arrangement of uses, land uses, general circulation patterns, methods of encouraging alternative transportation, general architectural characteristics, and environmental preservation, as well as keeping in mind the future site review application and the site review criteria that apply. No formal action, approval, or denial on the application will be taken tonight by the board. This particular proposal is required to undergo a concept plan review and subsequent site review as it exceeds the hundred thousand square feet threshold found in section nine two fourteen. Additionally, the applicant has requested a height modification, and the proposed building exceeds the maximum height, a maximum by right building height of forty feet in the industrial zone. And then concept plan review requires staff review in a public hearing before the planning board. In terms of the public notification, written notice was sent to property owners within six hundred feet. Notice is posted on the property, and email was received from community cycles that went directly to planning board for a review. To jump into the location of the project, this five-point-seventeen-acre property is located north of Arapahoe Avenue. It's west of Foothills Parkway, east of Thirty-third Street, and south of Pearl Parkway. The general character of the industrial area is manufacturing warehouse as well as commercial centers. The existing property is a one-story multi-tenant building with wholesale and manufacturing businesses. And as you can see, the majority of the site is occupied by surface parking. These images show the west side of the building that's looking at the Google offices and then the rear of the property. And in the rear west and rear east, you can see the railroad that's to the north of the property line. The site is designated as light industrial on the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Land Use Map. The property is north of Arapahoe between Thirty-third and Sixty-third Streets. The project site is zoned industrial general, consistent with the BBCP land use designation of light industrial. The IG zoning is intended for light industrial manufacturing operations. And the area directly to the north is industrial service one. The immediate context is characterized by a mix of industrial service and office uses. There is an office building, the Google building located to the west. The property to the east is a metal fabrication use. The properties across Walnut consist of shredder, which is an indoor ski school, a vet office, and other manufacturing uses. And then toward the northwest of the property, across the railroad is Cineda's Brewing and Black Sports, Black Lab Sports. And the area also contains a wide range of retail and commercial and industrial operations and uses within the half-mile radius. So I just wanted to point out a few different areas. And the Sunrise Shopping Center is located to the southwest, which contains a variety of retail service and restaurant uses, and King Super serves as the anchor tenant here. To the south of the state, closer to Arapahoe, is the CU Boulder Research Laboratories. Further south across Arapahoe is the CU East Campus. And then north of Arapahoe Ave and east of the site is East Park Industrial Office Park with technical office uses. There are also several transit lines accessible within the half-mile of the site. The bound and hop bus lines are located to the west on the on Thirty-Fifth Street. There are a few other transit lines running across Arapahoe. Lastly, the site is also within quarter mile walking distance to the regional RTD bus facility at Boulder Junction that serves both regional and local bus lines throughout Boulder and the Front Range. In terms of the transportation master plan, their proposed plan has. their proposed plan has identified the need to provide a buffer for the existing bike lane on Walnut Street per the low stress walk and bike network plan. That's within the current transportation master plan. Um, this is to improve the existing bike lane on the westbound Walnut Street adjacent to the site uh, by providing a seven foot wide buffered bike lane. In terms of area plans, the the site is actually not within the Transit Village area plan, as you can see on this map. It's just outside. However, it is impacted by the transportation connections plan that's within TBAP. And I'll get into more detail under key issue two later in the slide. Moving on to the proposed concept, the building is a life sciences facility that includes a combination of office and lab spaces suitable for science and tech-based development companies. The life sciences industry refers to all or all of the organizations and companies whose work is centered around research and development focused on living things. The concept plan proposes a contemporary building at fifty five feet in height and two stories tall. The building design is dynamic with high-quality materials. The west and east side of the buildings have anchor corners with patio and deck features. And the set of openings creates a transparency along Walnut Street, which contributes to the pedestrian experience. And the development is also proposed to be net zero with PV panels proposed over a portion of the surface parking. And the applicant will talk in more detail about the design elements during their presentation as well. The property is located in the Hundred Deer Flood Plain, um, which is required to elevate the elevate above the base flood elevation and in compliance with flood regulations. Um, and as mentioned before, the applicant has requested a height modification. Per the land use code, there are six circumstances in which these height modification can be considered as part of a site, site review. Um, only projects that do not meet the defined circumstances in this section um, are subject to the adopted community benefit requirements. This specific proposal meets criterion two. Uh, since the property is located within the IG Zone District, there are two or fewer stories. And the height is necessary for a manufacturing testing or other industrial processor equipment. Um, as such, the proposal does not trigger any community benefit requirements. In terms of the project stats, um, one hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-three square feet of floor area is proposed at this time. Um, there's the required parking is two hundred and eighty-two spaces. But the applicant has requested a parking reduction of twenty percent to two hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. Um, bike parking will be reviewed in detail at site review. Um, and then the uses generally fall under technical office, light industrial manufacturing and research and development. Some examples of tenants that could fall under this would be academic research, biomedical climate change research uses or other high-tech industries like AI, robotics, aerospace, et cetera. So next we'll move into the key issues. The first one being whether the proposed concept plan is compatible with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So staff generally finds that the proposed concept is preliminarily consistent with many of the goals and objectives and recommendations of the BBCP, particularly policies related to redevelopment of the site while preserving industrial uses. A full analysis will be done at site review. Um, for key issue two, so staff is really looking for feedback and direction from the board regarding the TVAP connections plan. The three questions that should be considered at this time is, um, you know, does planning board support an amendment to the connections plan? Does planning board want to see this connection built? Or is there an alternative that the board would suggest um, or be supportive of? To start off this conversation, um, the applicant has not considered the connection in the concept plan proposal reviewed by staff. Staff's preliminary analysis of the connection found that the feasibility to construct this connection is incredibly difficult as there are other parties involved. Um, and when this connections plan along with TBAP was adopted in two thousand and seven, um, it wasn't well vetted in that, um, per the connections plan, you know, this is a road that will connect Frontier Avenue to Walnut Street. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Frontier Avenue to Walnut Street as shown on the diagram. Um, and include an underpass at the railroad tracks. Um, and per the explanation in the document, this connection was suggested by the property owners with the understanding that they will pay for the full cost of the street and underpass. Um, moreover, it staffs understanding that this connection was not discussed with the state's Public Utilities Commission upon adoption, uh, nor was preliminary engineering done to identify typical street connection to determine how adjacent private properties would be impacted by this planned street. Um, the state's PUC regulates railroad crossings and is the approval agency for any work to be performed. And it's uncertain at this time whether PUC would approve a new underpass across the railroad right of way. Um, additionally, the construction of an underpass will significantly increase the cost of constructing the street connection. So the Transit Village Area Plan allows for amendments of planned connections due to either a physical hardship or practical hardship that would prevent construction of the connection. Um, understanding that the board will have a lot of follow-up questions regarding this key issue today and the feasibility of the connection. We do have Edward Stafford here from city staff who can speak to this in more detail if necessary. Um, and that concludes my presentation for tonight. Thank you. And um, if there are any questions for staff, we can take those now.
Thank you. Sarah, I see you have your hand up.
Sanab, um, Saban, Sabnan, thank you so much. I was a really, really well, well-written and easily accessible concept review. So thank you for that. Um, I will start just with a couple of questions that have to do with um the transportation issue. I'll start with one question, which is, um, what is the status of the bike path that was proposed for to follow on the southern side of the rail line?
It's an existing bike lane. So it's already built.
In the right of way of the railroad?
So actually, yeah, she's talking about the path. Sorry, Edward Stafford, Senior Manager of Civil Engineering. Let me jump in here if you don't mind. So you're talking about the path that's proposed in the connections plan along the railroad. And as I understand it, that plan intended it would be in the railroad right of way. At this point in time, it has not been built and is not clear that it actually would be feasible, that there would be an ability to reach any agreement with the railroad to include it as such, but it does still exist in the plan. You'll notice that the property to the west here, when it went through some expansion development, that trail was not included in that property either, as it was, you know, intended to be in that railroad right of way. Whether or not that can happen in the future is still unclear.
So Edward, is the city in negotiation, in discussion with the railroad?
It is not currently an active project in the capital program, so there's no current discussions happening. It would have to be identified and budgeted in the capital improvement program as a project to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Lisa.
I think I know the answer to this, but um, and thank you. That was a wonderful presentation, very clear. Um. In some of the drawings, and I think it's just the nature of the fact that rectangles are rectangles being put on top of a map. It looks like lines are going through buildings, which I think belong to like morose fabrication. Are those buildings going to be preserved? They're they're not part of the site plan. Is that a correct understanding?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, George.
Uh, yeah, I had a question on um the requested height modification and the community benefit associated with it. I I saw in the packet the justification for why there isn't community benefit associated with this height having to do primarily with um the building being two stories and having most of it uh, be mechanical space is what's above that thirty-five foot height threshold. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
So uh, what what I'm, what I want to understand from staff's perspective is what about the areas of the building that don't have um hood systems and things like that? For instance, I'm looking in the packet on page, let me give you the page number of a rendering of the front of the building where I see uh, an outdoor area that's covered. It looks like it's probably at that fifty-five foot height limit that clearly has no mechanical space above it. How does that fall? How does that play into community benefit? And that's on page thirty-nine of sixty-five, that rendering.
So George, I don't think it does. I think the exemption was really granted for um, the types of uses industrial and manufacturing that would like likely require larger volume buildings with um, you know, higher floor plates. So um, you know, the regulations don't actually split hairs in that way. It's just kind of a pure exemption based on the use and the typology of the building.
Okay, I I was gosh, I I was unclear on that. So so it has if it's a, if it's a life sciences building, irrespective if there's mechanical systems above it or not, it can have a fifty-five foot height without community benefit?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull the code section up here real quick. So if folks want to ask other questions while I do this, we can loop back to it.
Sure.
Okay, I see. Uh, oh, Laura, you have a hand up. Yeah.
Thank you. I do have a quick question that may fit in here. I am wondering if it is intended for this project to go through the dab and get comments on the building design.
It wouldn't be required in this instance, but uh, we could talk with the applicant about whether or not they're amenable to visiting dab.
Is that something that planning board can recommend? I think I read that somewhere.
Sure.
I don't know if Hella wants to weigh in on that.
Yep, the board has the authority to refer projects to dab.
Great, thank you. And by the way, thank you, Shabnam, for a really wonderful presentation. I agree, very, very clear.
And I have found the the section that Charles was referring to. So there is um, modification authority for buildings in industrial general, industrial service or industrial manufacturing zoning district. Um, if the building has two or fewer stories. So it it does look at just where it's located at and whether it has two or fewer stories in this case.
And the typology of use.
Okay, so you interpret that, just just so I'm clear, because that that was never clear to me. Um, so so basically you can have a fifty-five foot building in these zones as long as there are two stories um, with without being subject to community benefit at all.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
ML.
Um, thank you, John. Um, so I have, and this might be a question for the architects rather than the staff, but my questions around that very same um, topic, I believe that the exemption becomes validated when um, there is a need for the equipment to function properly. And, you know, I'm looking, but I'm looking into the architectural um, information here, not the staff. So I'm looking at the at the conceptual section. And then I'm looking at the actual section and I don't see that being supported in actuality. I didn't look at that entry area that George is talking about, but um, I'm thinking this is a question for the uh, architecture uh, presentation. But what are you thinking, Charles?
Well, actually, I think that that's a great question for the um, the architect's team. And maybe they can touch on that as part of their presentation.
Okay, any, any other questions here? Mark.
Um, in the uh TVAP uh, plan, the TVAP connections plan on page forty-five. Uh, this, there's a a street shown on the west side of the property. And I I realize that staff nor the applicant wants to see a street and I'm not uh, advocating for a street there. I also see a uh, that at that time, there was a proposed multi-use path to the east of the property, west of foothills, to the east of the property. And both that street and the multi-use path had a um, an underpass under the tracks as the way of getting safely past the tracks. My understanding, both how expensive um, underpasses are and problematic, et cetera. And and they have their own sets of problems for the people using them, icing in the winter, drainage, et cetera. Um, my question is, uh, Community Cycles uh, sent us an email. Um, advocating for, or at least raising the question about just an at-grade, uh, alighted at-grade crossing at the uh, at the point on the west side of the property where it would cross where a bike path pedestrian multi-use path would cross. And then the same question should be asked, I believe, of the multi-use paths. My questions are, do we have any plans for the multi-use path between uh, foothills and the east side of the property? Are at-grade crossings, uh, are are there examples of pedestrian bike at-grade crossings not associated with a street? We have a pedestrian bike at-grade crossing at Pearl, just of you know, several quarter mile away. Um, but that is, that is associated with a street in a quiet zone. And finally, if does, is the applicant have any responsibility for anything in in any circumstance? With an amenity near their property, but actually not adjacent to or a part of their property. So I asked several questions. I can go through them again, but anyway, uh, that I'm gonna stop talking and let you guys answer.
Edward, do you want to take this?
Yep, I'm gonna attempt to hopefully make sure I hit all three. If not, let me know which one I've missed. I'll start with the first one in terms of an at-grade pedestrian crossing in their railroad. Generally, you don't see those as standalone in most circumstances, also adding any type of at-grade, whether it be bike ped or street is a very difficult, if not impossible, process. The typical standard through the railroad and the Public Utility Commission is to add an at-grade crossing. You need to close two others. Um, has been what I have seen through my career. And so don't think we have any that we're currently preparing or proposing to close, which would be a significant implication out there. Um, I think the railroad, pretty confident railroad would oppose us at any goal and any attempt to do that. The railroad has grave concerns about trespassing as it is on rail property and the impacts to to safety and liability that's created by that. Finally, on that issue, I would also have significant concern on whether we could maintain the quiet zone under the FRA Federal Railroad Administration Regulations of Quiet Zones does not necessarily anticipate what you would do for a pedestrian or pet and bike only crossing. And I suspect in this circumstance, they would probably determine that adequate safety could not be met with just a gate system for which you could pretty easily walk around under or depending on the design. And we would lose our quiet zone exemption in this particular area, which of course would have other significant impacts to the community. So for those reasons, it's my technical recommendation that at-grade crossing that location is technically infeasible and should not be pursued. On the question of the path along what I'll call the foothills area there. And depending on how you look at the different mapping, and unfortunately, I don't have TVAP open in front of me, but I have our other internal mapping of the plans. And currently, those are, of course, connections for the future. There's not an active project in there. Would presume though, the design concept behind that, it would be an assumption that the trail itself over the railroad would likely become a part of or attached to the Foothills Parkway Bridge that goes The foothills Parkway Bridge that goes over at the railroad. Uh, it would be highly unlikely that we'd be able to construct an underpass at the location. There's also an overpass. Also, our understanding generally, the railroad would prefer not to have an underpass. It creates bridges uh that become their problem and liability in terms of their tracks. They don't like to see that. And also given flood and drainage issues, that can be a concern. So that one I would presume would go over as a part of an attachment to that particular uh existing facility for foothills Parkway. Your last question was in terms of the ability to require improvements off-site um or near a property. And I assume you're uh thinking about in terms of that particular path. The challenge we have with that is we need to have to be able to make a finding that they are uh creating the particular need for that improvement, and that's a mitigation. To the situation that is being created. In a case like this, it would be hard to say that they have created the primary need for that path. There could be some level uh, you know, to say, oh, they've created a portion of the user base, but it's probably fairly insignificant compared to the larger regional. And so it would be very difficult, and I'm sure Hella can uh speak to this if, if you want more legal sense, but highly difficult to. Or make that a required infrastructure improvement to be able to tie it to the needs that their project is creating. I think I hit all three of your questions, but uh if not, or you have follow-ups, please let me know.
No, that was, that was uh excellent. And uh, as partly as I anticipated, dealing with railroads sucks. So, anyway, yeah, thank you.
Sarah.
Thanks. Um, and first of all, somebody's cat is. Diring of attention. Um, so the applicant calls this in marketing terms, a well-being building. Is that a, a city code of some kind, or can we just ignore that?
It's not.
It's not.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you very much.
George.
Oh, thanks. Um, I, I just had a follow-up question because I, I'm confused on, on a rendering, maybe class. Uh, staff can clarify, if not, the applicant can clarify. On, on thirty nine of sixty five, the rendering that I brought up. Initially, and then we talked about a two-story building and the, in the, in the packet talks about a two-story building. But what I visually read here is different than that. I, I see, I see on the, the, the um, that mezzanine level, that looks like a two-story. But if you look to the left, that looks like a, that, so that third story is not occupied space?
What um page was that?
Uh, thirty nine of sixty five, it says architecture concept. And I'm talking to the uh, the building to the left of that outdoor, you know, upper eating area. So. Um. It's life sciences boulder, then to left. There it looks like.
I think this might be more appropriate um question for the applicant when they.
Okay, uh, for, I have a question, maybe I'll uh take the opportunity, and that is with respect to uh what. Why a two-story building needs to be fifty five feet high? Um, I understand this is a, you know, industrial, you know, industrial laboratory type uh facility. Is there some basis that the applicant has provided to the city that justifies that height?
Yeah, so um, an applicant can also, you know, elaborate on this, but they have provided some justification that. Um, one, I think that the height is required by their specific tenants that would have um. I guess higher, you know, equipment and the configuration of the equipment would require that. And then the other one is that the slope and the height of the building. The slope of the roof and height of the building allows the mechanical to be um well within the building rather than having large mechanical screening and equipment. Um, on the roof of the building. So it provides for a better design.
Okay, thanks. Well, I presume the applicant is listening and we'll uh talk about that in their presentation. Sarah?
All right, I have two questions. I'll just ask them at the same time. Uh, the first is, what will be coming out of those chimneys? And how do we um think about um air quality um vis-à-vis those chimneys? That's question number one. And then uh question number two has to do with the um transportation analysis, the traffic analysis. Wasn't quite clear how you, they, the traffic folks estimated something like a thousand, more than a thousand cars. Each day, but only ninety-five during um uh rush hour. I just, that, that didn't make a ton of sense to me.
I think these might be better geared towards the, well, can stand terms of what um, I think in application, they've. Pointed out that it's exhaust and chimney, um, assuming it's for the, the tenants uh using that, that space. And then. Um, I don't think they've demonstrated anything in applications as of now that um explains any kind of. Um, you know, air pollution, et cetera. So uh, I think those two questions. Um, if the applicant can keep that in mind when they present.
Okay, so, so that mean this is sort of a, is it your understanding that this is a spec building, or do they have tenants?
I, I, I'm not certain on that. I, as far as I know, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Laura.
Thank you. Um, it was mentioned that uh about that connection um that, which sounds like would be very difficult to construct, but I was just curious. Who are the property owners that said that they would pay for that connection? Because it sounds like it's not all of the property owners. I was just wondering which subset it was.
So I don't believe we actually have that information. It wasn't uh left in the TVAP plan. It was just noted that the property owners in the area had suggested and would then be responsible. For the cost for that connection. Um, but the, the document doesn't lay out the specifics, so it would have been part of deliberations and creation of it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Um, I wanna add on to John and George's questions about the roof, because I, I, I was perplexed. As well, and I know the applicant is gonna clear everything up for us soon, but this is a city question. Do we. Incentivize pitched roofs in commercial buildings? And in it, and I, I, again, I'm reading the packet, I was confused about a height bonus. Based on the pitch roof. And um, do we incentivize that? And are we creating that incentive? Because the mechanical systems hidden beneath a pitched roof are more attractive. Than just with metal screening that is typically exempt from any height required.
So in this particular zone district, there is no incentive to um tuck the mechanical equipment, you know, inside the roof. Um. In some of our form-based code districts, we're experimenting with, you know, requiring different roof pitches so that we don't have exclusively flat roof buildings. But in this particular case, um, and in this particular zoning district, there's no incentive to do that. They could just very well. Um, you know, do a flat roof building with larger scale mechanical equipment on the top of it. So I think it's really more of a design choice for the applicant.
ML.
Thank you, John. Um, so I, I think this is a staff question. I'm looking at uh the requirements of nine two fourteen. And one of the um sections talks about making efficient use of land. Um, the minimum amount of land necessary to meet the parking needs of the project. And there's a vast sea of parking. Um, and in that area, uh, at least. Just to the east of that area, it seems like there's floodplain issues or flooding issues. So I'm wondering if in the staff's view, that's section H two. Um. One, two. I two. Um, I'm wondering if you feel that it is an efficient use of the land insofar as the parking goes.
Shabnam, do you want to talk about their proposed parking reduction?
Yes, so um, they are requesting a twenty percent parking reduction. Um, you know, it's something I believe um. Can be suggested to applicant to pursue more of a parking reduction if that kind of meets their needs. Um, and this specific issue, we can also. Um, kind of review in detail during the, the site review for the. Application. So there are two hundred and twenty-eight required parking spaces, I believe, and they're providing two twenty-six at this time.
Yeah, I think my question has more to do with um, whether it makes sense. To efficiently use the land uh in a parking structure capacity. Where you will stack it and not have big sea of parking, but I recognize that they used pervious paving. Are they assuming that all of their storm water is managed in that parking area with pervious paving?
So I'm sure the applicant can. Address that further. I don't believe right now they're looking at pervious paving, that at times has challenges in this climate in the state in terms of its success. They would be required to manage and treat um all of their runoff from all of their paved areas, including the parking lot where the building sits, all of that, under the requirements of. The stormwater system in both Title XI of the Boulder Revised Code and the Design and Construction Standards.
Okay, I saw, it's in there, it's in the packet under their information. So I made an assumption. Um, that it was real and that, that, that's how they were going to deal with the storm water. Because that, I mean, that's like half the site that's a parking lot, right?
ML, you're right, they're, they are indicating permeable pavers and they're um, at least in a portion of their um parking area. So. Um, again, it's, the plans are very conceptual at this point, but another great question for um, for the team that hopefully they can prepare for as they get ready to present.
Thank you.
Apologize for anything that was wrong there in terms of I haven't looked closely at their drainage. Permeable pavers do work in some areas as a water quality uh treatment, but there are requirements that we have in the code in terms of what they have to do to treat all of that area.
Yeah, and they do have some detention area that's embedded in the parking area as well as um, you know, some of the other green space. So, but again, Edward, to your point, it is highly conceptual at this point. And obviously don't have, you know, engineering drawings that are very well developed right now. So, great question for the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll take this uh opportunity to ask staff if they have any additional thoughts about uh. Permeability through the site for multi-use paths. And uh, I, I have heard the conversation about what exists and doesn't exist presently along the railroad and uh on the other side of the railroad. But uh, uh, what do you think about uh, what should we be thinking about in this respect now?
Well, I can jump in. Um, so the site is bifurcated by a service lane, um, you know, which would be able to be traversed um by pads. It doesn't necessarily look like it's completely set up for um. Dedicated, um, you know, bike travel through there. And then there, there's a vehicular access lane. Um. On the, let's see, it looks like the west side of the site that doesn't look like it connects up to Walnut. Um, there may be some considerations there about how to better integrate. Um, you know, better permeability and the ability for pedestrians and bikes to kind of traverse the, not just the interior of the site, but. Um, along the western edge as well. And Shab, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but it seems like that might be an opportunity.
Yeah, um, that vehicular access drive um is on the other, the adjacent property. Um, and it, the existing conditions show that there is um connection to the, the property now. Um, but that's, it's kind of going away based on this uh concept plan. To provide more of a buffered landscape along that property line.
Okay, well, thank you. And then just to follow up a little bit on something Sarah inquired about, and that is. Uh, you know, we had a, a long history with Cordon Pharma that uh they polluted very badly for a long time. I don't know what's happening now. Uh, to what degree does the city have any ability to uh. Deal with uh emissions, you know, you smoke stack or elsewhere from a, a facility of this type?
Well, I think based on the use, there's EPA standards. I'm far from an expert. I don't know if Hella may be able to speak to um. Whether or not we have anything locally um in our regulations that uh might help to get at that, but typically it's based on the, the use typology of the building.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any standards that the city would have in that regard, so I'm, I can't really speak to it any further either. Something we could look into for us, this moves forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, do any planning members have questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll bring this section of the meeting to a close. And thank you, Shabnam. That was a nice presentation.
And John?
Oh, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but uh I wanted to remind you to ask about disclosures and conflicts.
Yeah, that was my next step. So, as Hella reminds us, uh, it's appropriate now for all members of planning board to. Uh, make any disclosures that they have that could have any impact on their uh ability to, to address this project and deal with it fairly and objectively. Sarah?
I don't have any conflicts, but I did go check out the site uh yesterday, but I can make decisions fairly and. When I'm making decisions today, but I couldn't make comments that are fair and equitable.
Okay, ML?
Yeah, I think I'm in uh the same sort of thing. I know that, I know the site. I, I'm very familiar with the, the business that is on the property now. Um, so I'm familiar with the site. I'm familiar with the area. Um, and I think actually it gives me some perspective on especially the stormwater and that sort of thing, because I, I've seen it. But uh, I, I don't think I have any um, anything that's going to interfere with my ability to look at the project on its own merits.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
I will say similarly, I used to live in the area and would walk my dog past this property uh quite frequently. So I'm familiar with it, but I don't have any uh conflicts that would prevent me from uh being fair in my evaluation of this concept review or site review.
Thank you. Any other? Uh, George?
I, I, I have a question for Hella, just for, good, because I, because I hear these types of comments a lot, but I toured the site. I also toured the site. Um, independently, I guess my question is. Is that ever a conflict? Do we need to disclose this? Because it, it just, it takes two extra minutes of meeting time each one of these things. So, so I'm just, I wanted to clarify with Hella what we need to disclose, what we don't. So we don't need to necessarily waste time.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an outside conversation. It's uh, so it's not an ex parte communication that you're disclosing. I think it does show a little bit of outside knowledge that you're bringing in about the site. Um, I, I think it's, it's valuable to disclose it, but you could just leave it at that and say that you're familiar with the side or toward the side. Be brief about it.
Hella, is that only for tours or also for just familiar with the site?
Um, I, I think if you, if you go out and look at it for. For purposes of the review, then you should disclose it. I, I think you don't necessarily have to disclose it if. You're just familiar with the site because you live in Boulder and you have so, and some point after it passed it. Um. It's, it's more a matter of transparency, I guess, but.
Well, great, because I, I, as a role, unless I've directly toured or have some specific thing, I tend not to disclose, but it'd be difficult to find. A site I didn't have some passing familiarity with, so good to know I'm doing that correctly.
Mark, did you have a comment?
Even though it's taking up time, I agree with George that this is a little performative exercise, I think, that I think we might assume that all of us have taken an interest in a site that we're supposed to be reviewing. And very well, all of us might have visited at one point either in the very near past or in the distant past and have some relationship to buying salt and pepper shakers at at the restaurant supply store. So anyway, my, my mode is going to be, I will visit every site. I'm, I don't feel the need to disclose that unless I've had some other ex parte communication and to move the meeting on. I think maybe the default mode would be if you haven't gone and visited the site or you're not familiar with it, then that might be an indication of negligence and and you might disclose that. But anyway, I I I vote that we we carry on.
Okay, I I would just like to disclose, in addition to having visited the site, that I have had social interaction with some members of the applicant's staff, but I don't feel that that will interfere with my ability to treat this fairly and objectively. Okay. So with that clarified, I think we, let's see, I think we can go ahead with the applicant's presentation now and we'll break thereafter for a couple minutes. So let's move ahead with the applicant.
Thanks, everyone. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? And somebody confirm? Yeah, okay, good. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. I appreciate the the planning board and the staff for paying close attention to this project. So I want to introduce myself and the team. I'm Daniel Eisenman. I'm the applicant in order for West Meadow LLC, a conscience paid company. We're local, adherent Boulder on Pearl Street Mall, and I got to say that we bought this property in 2030. So I want to introduce the rest of the team, Danica Powell from Tressle Strategies. Sharon, Shannon Jones from Stantec and Tony Thornton from Stantec, who are architects and designers on the project, who will be speaking shortly. So if you don't mind going to the next slide. So I'm here to present the 112,000 square foot, two-story, state-of-the-art life sciences building that it's nestled in the heart of Boulder. Make sure I want to say that it's within walking distance of RTD and the Boulder's Junction Depot Square Station. And our goal for this project is to create a place that attracts and embodies scientific discovery, collaboration, and environmental sustainability. In fact, our design is aiming for a net zero carbon facility. We don't believe there's any of its kind over. And that's something that is dear to us. So consistent with the roots of Boulder, home to the University of Colorado, who was, who is at the center of research nationally and internationally, along with our 17 federal laboratories and multiple prestigious private sector companies in the biotech, pharma, renewable energy, aerospace, robotics, hydatic industries. We are intending to build a world-class facility that attracts science and technology companies whose innovative research enhances the human experience. So people is at the core of who's going to have a take this project. Like to say that we have assembled a world-class team of consultants from Boulder and Colorado at large. This group includes Stantec, obviously, as our designers who have a date on the Pro Street Mall and have been in that office for 45 years. And most recently, Stantec designed and completed the Denver Water Headquarters and the Enrail National Laboratory and Energy and Renewable Energy Laboratory, both net zero facilities. So we also have JBA on the line, Sharon Prokopio, also a local consultant. So we try to build as much locality to this, to this opportunity. So a little bit of a conscience bay, if you don't mind going to the next slide. So we're a private equity firm. We acquire, develop, and manage unique real estate assets. We are Boulder-based since 2011 with operations spanning from Boulder and the west and the and the front range along with the western. And we take pretty seriously that our property owning properties equates to ownership and responsibility and while produce profits is profit in practicing good stewardship. Next slide. So we have a diverse portfolio and we own offices, retail spaces, mixed use, hospitality buildings, industrial complexes, apartment buildings, but additionally, we also operate working farms, ranchers, and solar energy production facilities in the western slope. Unique to indifferent for most companies, we donate 1% of our profits to nonprofits that are focused on education, arts, health, and human services and climate change. And we also are supporters of sustainable reach, research, and conservation advocacy groups. In fact, Conscious Bay Company has always cared deeply about sustainability and climate action. And currently, we're in the process of setting up a foundation called Conscious Bay Research that will support a handful of impact areas. Some of them are currently including funding in soil science research to help create more drought resilience and biodiversity and carbon storage. Kelp aquaculture research to better understand how the ocean can help draw carbon and mitigate climate change. We also advocate federal advocacy to make climate change a priority, and we also provide grants to organizations that are working in regenerative agriculture. We also donate our time. We're active community members in multiple nonprofits, including the Western Resource Advocate, the CU Lead School of Business, and the Real Estate School, as well as part of the Urban Land Institute. So I want to pass the baton to Danica, who's going to talk to us a little bit about the community benefit.
Good evening, Danica Powell with Tressle Strategy Group. Very excited to bring this project to you tonight. I think it represents a lot of the design challenges we've been facing in our community, how to create excellence in design while functionality within our buildings. And we are really excited to answer all your questions about the pitch rules and the mechanical. Having been on planning board in 2010, I know we've been trying to figure out how to deal with mechanical equipment for many years, and I think this is an elegant solution. So in terms of community benefit, while not required by this project, it's always important to bring something that benefits the community in which we're building. So this is a building of scientific discovery. It has excellence in design. We hope to attract and build businesses that are here because of the science and technology that has always been in our community. It's an adaptive and responsive building, so it can be flexible. It will be a teaching building. It will be smart and secure. It will be much more energy efficient. This 112,000 square foot building will be replacing a 110,000 square foot building that is not energy efficient or a model of development for our generation. And we do want to make it beneficial, create an emotional connection to the community, be a teaching place, research for the future, etc. So I think this is really important that this project is of community value and of benefit and of design excellence. And so a lot of thought has gone into this design in a very conceptual phase. So love to take your comments forward as we move through site review. A a deep discussion has already begun on the site connections. I just want to acknowledge that we've done a lot of research on this. We've spoken to the Boulder or the BNSF. We've looked at all the alternatives, going under, going over. As Edward explained, going under is actually not allowed by the railroad. Going over would look a lot like Foothills Parkway with a road. You know, basically bisecting us from the neighboring sites and very high up. And going across has been, we have been told quite equivocally, that's not an option. We do want to create connections within our project and throughout the neighborhood. So we're open to discussing that, but the TVAP connections that were identified in 2004 are not feasible today. I will note that Conscious Bay was not the owner at that point either. I know there was a question about the TVAP. I believe Conscious Bay bought this property in 2011. So we have lots of backup slides to explain the technical aspects of these connections and are will in are open to discussing how we can create this permeability and connectivity that we all desire in this part of the community. And I will pass it off to Shannon to talk about the design.
Thanks, Danica, and thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm so excited about this project and can't wait to talk more about it with you all. I really appreciate your questions, too. So I will try my best to address as many of those as I can as we talk about the design. So as Danica mentioned, this is a 100,000 square foot existing building there today with a lot of surface parking. So knowing that we're adjacent to the other parking areas. What we're really proposing here, though, is to create some more permeability. This is only 112,000 square feet, so it's only a delta of 12,000 square feet from what's there today, while also creating storm management and water quality that doesn't exist today either. So I think it's also really important to note here that the use and zoning of the industrial general is still staying the same. So we are we are only meeting our FAR of 0.5. And we're asking for that 20% reduction in parking. So we're only proposing 226 parking spaces while using some of that permeable pavers in order to help mitigate some of that storm and water quality issue. So with the open space that we're providing here, we wanted to really integrate some natural and organic features with the trees. So we're scattering the trees throughout the site and really creating a very nice shade canopy as well as providing some of those photovoltaic shade structures as well. So we want to get to that net zero. It's a target for us. And so we're providing as much photovoltaic as we think makes sense, and that'll help us meet those goals. We're also providing the photovoltaics on the roof of the building. So you can kind of see here in the in the diagram. In terms of the rest of the site, we really want to create a pedestrian-friendly experience along the sidewalk here. And so one of the things we really want to do is provide some interpretive signage. So creating a lovely walking area as well as creating a very inviting space to the to the public. So the entrance right now, we have a staff comment that we'd like to address, and we'll start coordinating with the reviewers so that we can make sure that the entrance is really very visible from the Walnut Street. We have a number of signs that help to announce the project to this, to the community as well as amenity decks. So whether that's the second floor one or the first floor one that we have. Additionally, we are providing some rain gardens. So the rain gardens will again help with that water mitigation as well as some pollinators. So creating a really nice and friendly pollinator type of landscape, bringing in some educational components. So how can we invite the community into potentially do some school tours? Having some guided tours of the facility to talk a little bit more about the science within or some of those interpretive panels that are a little bit more passive. We'd really like to provide some indoor and outdoor event spaces so that it can be a gathering spot for that scientific community as well as the solar canopies, connection to that multi-use path and shade over the parking area. And since we're next to that multi-use path, why not provide some open open-air gym kind of experiences as well as part of that open space strategy? And Tony, if I could ask you to talk a little bit about sustainability?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. My name is Tony Thorn with Stantec. And again, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. And fortunately, my dog just stopped barking, so this should work out here. As a part of our commitment to the community, this project and its occupants, we are targeting the highest, most progressive standards for sustainability and wellness. So well, well, building standard, you can think of it like lead for wellness in buildings. Some of the strategies here include that we're targeting net zero energy carbon, chilled bean cooling, lead, a high level of lead certification, operable windows, again, the well-building standard, which I mentioned. The building is planned to be fully electric, and it will be controlled by smart systems. There will be a geo exchange field. So geothermal is another way of describing that. And as you've seen in the diagrams and renderings already, there are large photovoltaic arrays.
Thanks, Tony. And just to talk really quickly about the site palette. We really want to provide that tree canopy, those permeable pavers, and using an accent paver to really help distinguish the space. Additionally, what's more bolder than having some large boulders on site? And that'll also help us alleviate some of the height differences as a result of the floodplain. Some of the building materials that we're talking about using are natural stone or rain screen, perhaps metal panel for the wall systems, perhaps for this, for the roof systems as well and as well as brick cladding. So these really high-quality materials that'll help announce the project to the community as well as introducing some of those warmer materials like timber framing or some wood slat canopy is just to warm it up a little bit and also provide a touch of that nature in the architecture itself. The next few slides I'm going to walk through pretty quickly here, just because we're running out of time. We're going to start with an existing site photo, and then we're going to talk about the actual design. So in the aerial view, as you see it here, again, 100,000 square foot warehouse, 112,000 square foot, two-story, only two-story building here. So one of the most important things that I'm already hearing a lot of conversation about, in order to support the function of the building, life sciences, we need these mechanical units and that a large amount of mechanical units and chimneys in order to support the function. So what we're proposing is to bury that mechanical behind the roof structure. So it really is not going to be visible from the street view or from even from Foothills Parkway. So amongst the the solar panels, we also have that mechanical. I will note that that mechanical space is just over the walnut side of this building as well as along the north-south axis of the building. And that's really important so that we can allow for future flexibility and creating resiliency within the built environment so that what we're building now can be used and reused by different tenants as they move in and out of this in and out of this facility. This, this view here shows the existing site. This would basically be where the entrance of the building is. So the curb cuts in a similar location, but we are proposing to move it over a little bit. Existing today, there are three curb cuts, and we're only going to have one at the end of the day, so we can really allow for a lot more open space. Additionally, in this view, you can see a lot of those Excel power cables going up up ahead as well as enough, not a very friendly pedestrian walkway. So in our proposal, the all of that electrical gets buried, and we're creating the the standard streetscape as well as you can start to see a lot of this natural, organic type of landscape that helps to just really soften up the entire site. Additionally, I will, I will mention this again here, where we really want to have a really warm and inviting kind of entrance. This fireplace here is adjacent to this amenity space, so creating outdoor areas where people can take some phone calls outside. As somebody who works in a lab, they really don't get a lot of daylight and a lot of time outside. So creating some of these spaces where they can take a break, have a phone call, maybe they can even take some meetings out in some of these spaces. Additionally, we're looking at that entrance. Once again, I'm going to say that again, we're looking at this entrance to make sure that it's really very visible from the street and activating that street. Another existing photo, you can see the tundra supply there. Everyone sounds like they're very familiar with the site. This is the view from Walnut Street. We're looking at a two-story, really nice, tall and open amenity deck on the second floor adjacent to perhaps the office and lab uses that are behind it. So in this facade, we're proposing some vertical louvers, and so those are meant to help with glare, knowing that western facades can receive a lot of afternoon light. And then finally, the foothold foothills Parkway view. So we are so excited about this design and the fact that these pitched roofs not only help to hide the mechanical, but they also start to reference our our very own flat irons. So to see some of this geometry in this particular view, I think is really critical because it's really helps to speak to the design, and we're very excited about what we're proposing here. And I think that's my time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that at this point, we'll take a break for about five minutes and come back. And the planning board will may have some questions for the applicant, and then we'll take up our discussion. So we'll meet again in 7:36.
Lisa, how is your son?
He's good. He finally fell asleep. His afternoon nap was thirty minutes today, so he was a little beside himself, but he's good. He's very cute.
Is he, how old is he now?
Ten months, ten months on the thirtieth, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to grab coffee sometime when he's not over exhausted and you can meet him too.
Someday we can meet in person.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love that.
Okay. Let's see, are we all back here? Seems to me there's one more photo that I should be looking at. Okay, I think we can get started. Thanks for that presentation. And I think we'll open, open it up now to questions from planning board to the applicant. So anyone have any questions? Lisa?
Yeah, um. I feel like the way I was about to phrase it, it sounds negative, and that's not how I mean it. But I think my understanding is that tenants are not lined up for this, that this is more of a recognition of the kinds of companies and the work that comes out of CU and so on that we have in Boulder and in the area. And that this sort of office space, very specialized space might be of value. Is that true that tenants, and don't feel like you have to divulge if you can't talk about it. But am I correct that tenants aren't specifically lined up? And you're, what I was going to say is that you're building on spec, which I feel like sounds a little negative, because I think it's a great project. But am I correct about that?
Yeah, if I can take that back, yes, at this stage where our building on spec, our intent is to find a build to suit tenant. Ultimately, our building is designed to take no more than four to six tenants. But our intent is to lend a bigger tenant. We're in the very early stages, we have not gone out to market the building. We have not, we don't have brokers in place, and we probably won't until we have some, some assurances that we'll actually be able to execute where we want to execute.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah?
So I realize we're at concept review, but obviously the two-story fifty-five-foot combo is, is a concern for at least some members of the board. So I'm curious if you could show us the, some drawings of the inside as currently conceptualized? And who helped you to figure out that to basically twenty stores, twenty-foot stories would be what they would want in offices? And I, I just, it seems for a spec building. I'm, I'm just curious how you figured, how you figured out what to, what to do with the inside of the building?
Sure, I'll, I'll take the first non-technical stab, and we do have an exhibit, Shannon. Hopefully you can bring that up. So yes, in an industrial building by in and of itself requires high floor-to-floor. So they, you know, often require high bays. And, you know, you need mechanical equipment to come in and out of them, so the code allows for that. In this particular case, let's start at the bottom. We're in the floodplain, so we're in the hundred-year floodplain. So we already have to be elevating this building approximately three feet above the base. Or it's five feet above the base floor elevation. So we're just automatically, this building is bumping up. I think you all familiar, maybe not yet, because you're new to planning board, that how we measure height is twenty-five feet from the lowest point of the building to the lowest point on the site. So we're losing elevation both through the height measurement and the floodplain elevation. So I think that takes five feet just off the table that's not in the built form. And then we have our first floor, which is that office mid-lab, mid-height lab. And then we have structural mechanical, so there is a structural mechanical larger space than a typical building between that first floor. So that gets us to twenty feet. And then we have another tall flexible lab space. And you can see that a lot of it isn't usable gross square footage, or it's gross square footage, but it's not usable, it's not occupied. So which is important because it's not driving jobs, it's actually creating architectural interest and hiding the mechanical equipment. So this mechanical is very specialized for this type of building. And if you drive around town, you can probably see some of the examples. One is on the top, the CU Boulder Seal Laboratories is a good example of where they've also buried the mechanical inside the rooftop. A, a bad example would be putting a giant mechanical by code sixteen-foot mechanical with a chimney stack on top. So we have been very intentional around this height request. It is to create good architectural form and a building that sustains. It's not creating more usable square footage or more occupiable space, which I think is very different than some of the other height modifications that you've seen. It's really to create this architectural form and interest that we've heard and I've heard as a member of the community, it's very desired. We would like pitched roofs, we'd like more architectural interest, we'd like more geometry, more iconic buildings. So this was very intentional to create a highly functional building that doesn't appear as an industrial building. So this graphic is very, very technical, but it does hopefully show you why the building is up to fifty-five feet. It's not fifty-five feet throughout, and it's not starting at, you know, zero feet. So there's a lot that went into this, and I will say it was very intentional. Typically, a concept plan, you don't see this level of design, usually see kind of white boxes with generalities. This is actually trying to build to something that would be long-lasting, as many of us have described tonight.
Thanks, Danica. I really appreciate that. I think that's a great way to explain this. The only thing that I might add is that, again, with science and technology or life sciences type of use. We will have a much taller mechanical unit than you would have on your typical office building or any other kind of commercial project. And so by providing this really hidden type of geometry, we're doing our best to try to hide that. Because we don't want it to be visible from the many views. And I'll show this foothills parkway view one more time so that we can all kind of wrap our heads around. You can just barely see into where that mechanical space might even start. And those peaks, as Danica had mentioned, the peaks that you see on those gabled roofs, the very tip of that gable is that fifty-five feet. And so we're only going down from there in terms of the rest of the geometry. Tony, I don't know if there's any other technical aspects you'd like to flip back and add on to that at all?
I, I think you covered it very well, Shannon and Danica. Definitely, the intent in the tall flexible lab space is to provide, as, as Daniel mentioned. The, it could be up to six tenants in here, so we could be reconfiguring spaces quite a bit over time. We get a build to suit, that's great, but this allows for maximum flexibility. The mechanical comes in up high where it's out of, out of the disturbance range of where in certain lab spaces. You'd have to go in and bust into the ceiling and cause a lot of excess disturbance in that space. So this comes in clean and clear and allows for the extra tall lab spaces. And then we carry out our, our mid-height lab spaces in the middle and on the lower floor.
And I'd like to just add that from a market standpoint, the type of user that would be looking at this building is expecting these requirements related to height and clearances. And the flexibility as well. So that is, that is consistent with most science and tech and life sciences users.
I might just follow up quickly on this question. And that is to inquire about the, the portion of the building that's devoted to offices. How you see that need for fifty-five feet in, in that portion of the building?
Well, and this is critical to mention, currently we're managing roughly a sixty, forty split, sixty percent lab, forty, forty percent office. But that doesn't need to be the case. In fact, this could be a hundred percent all lab space. So the interest of flexibility, we are contemplating the potential of having lab space where we're currently thinking might have office space. So again, it could be twenty percent office space, eighty percent lab, it could be a hundred percent lab space as well. So that's why we, we, we need that flexibility as well.
And I think it's important to note too, that when we're talking about office and lab, they aren't two separate uses. People who work in labs need office desks that they can sit in conference room spaces and things like that. So we're not doubling up in terms of the amount of people that are actually in this building. But that is all just in service to each other in terms of those two uses. So they aren't two separate tenants, it would be all one tenant using both office and lab. In most conditions, like Daniel mentioned, it's sort of a sixty, forty split in terms of what the market is telling us now.
Lisa, you have some additional question? Oh, your hand is still.
No, I'm, I'm just bad at lowering my hand, but thank you for calling.
George?
Yes, thank you. I think it's a great-looking project overall and interesting uses. And I love the idea of, of it being, you know, preserving sort of light industrial use in Boulder, which I think is all great. I wanted to go back to, I think it was page thirty-seven or sixty-five in your, in your aerial view. Because your cross-section that you brought up versus what's actually presented is quite a bit different. So the cross-section that I saw was a pitched roof with a mechanical space sandwiched in between it. And when I look at those two front buildings, you've got basically fifty-five-foot pitched roofs over space. And then mechanical space adjacent to it at a lower level. So how does this jive with what you just showed us relative to what we're, what we're looking at?
Shannon, why didn't you show the section, the black and white section? I think that's, that's probably a little bit more accurate. We were trying to depict that dramatically, something to explain, but this is an accurate section through the, through the site. So go ahead, Shannon, if you don't mind explaining.
Yeah, so good question, George. So this section in particular is taken on the backside. So what we're calling the sort of north, north-south oriented portion of the leg of the building. And this is showing, this is basically that peak, that fifty-five-foot peak in elevation in the distance. And then we're cutting through this here. And I do apologize if that was confusing, we weren't trying to mislead anyone. We're just trying to kind of diagrammatically show it in a different way here. And then what you're asking about in the other scenario, it would look a little bit differently. So we would have two peaks here and a peak here, but it would just imagine it to be rotated ninety degrees from where it is right now. And so having those two peaks, that geometry is still going to hide mechanical space behind from the walnut view. And I can kind of show that in the renderings, if, if that would be easier to look at there too.
Yeah. Would be helpful, because I, I understand it relative to the backside of the building and what you just showed in the black and white. I just, I mean, a hard time understand, because you're, you're showing basically fully roofed spaces at fifty-five feet on the walnut side, and then one inside the walnut side too.
Yeah, so maybe this elevation might help us out a little bit here, George. So these peaks again are at that fifty-five foot. There's a small flat roof area for the mechanical systems that would be on this portion of the roof. So if that helps at all, that fifty-five feet is up here, and then those mechanical systems feed into each of these spaces left and right of this 2D drawing that we're looking at here.
So they, they do come in above the second story line. And again, the space in there is intended to be high for flexibility in terms of the lab space. So they are coming in above the ceiling line and providing lab space. So it's, it's kind of a, a mixed strategy of using the pitched roofs for concealing mechanical from the outside view. But also allowing us that flexible space inside.
Yeah, that, that, that makes, what you just said makes sense, because I see that second section there. And I don't see how the second building at fifty-five feet obscures anything from any view. Except providing just a fifty-five-foot roof space, which is fine, as I, I just want to understand sort of the, the, the scope of what you're, what you're trying to accomplish. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Mark?
You should, M L's had her hand up.
Okay, M L, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your presentation there, and I really appreciate the mission and culture that you are bringing to the project. So I have a number of questions. One is about the site, but I'm going to continue talking about the, the roof. You showed the one section on the kind of flatter part. Do you have another section through the front part, through the part of the building that is on walnut? Edges on walnut? Do you only have the one building section?
Yeah, currently at the time, we only have the one building section. Certainly, as the building develops, we'd be happy to provide more sections to clarify sort of location of roofs and mechanical units and the relationships between them.
Right, can, can we see the building section? Yeah, that would be great.
Sure.
Are we looking for this one? Just the one you were looking for?
Well, it's the only one, right? The other one's a concept. So let me see, I have. you've got fifteen foot, well, twelve foot six, twelve foot something. Floor to ceiling plates, is that what you're looking at for your, for your building volume?
So it, it is fifteen feet from first floor, top of the first floor to the top of the second floor. The twelve foot six inches is what we are hoping to have clear. That's what the market is telling us that lab users typically need.
Right. And that space is, is the floor space that would require whatever ducting and mechanical that would need to run in that, in that, in that space. So I I think it would behoove the project to have some more specificity around the height requirement. I am not convinced on the fifty five foot that you're proposing. I saw that concept diagram. It's blocking the view of the chimney, which is the highest thing up there. So the, the intent of using it to, to block the mechanical, the mechanical is actually down at the lower part of that roof pitch. And if you look at it from this, from the sidewalk, as your concept diagram showed, you're never going to see the mechanical. Even if you keep, you know, the, the roof down at a lower, at a lowered level, just because what you're using for your sightline is the chimney. At least that's what that concept diagram showed is that, did I
Shannon, yeah, maybe, maybe we can show this, this diagram, which is a more conventional diagram. I think our screen walls may be a little far out, but and, and one other point of clarification in the low area, those are our, our mid, our mid sized lab spaces. But then when you pop up into the volume space, it is to provide flexibility for taller lab spaces. It does work both for mechanical and screening. But it also provides for additional tall height lab spaces. So we're actually busting above that mid height lab space there to give some real unique flexibility in those zones over the mid height lab space. And then back to the other diagram, if you would. So again, this is very diagrammatic. It's not intended to be any actual building or a hundred percent representation of, of our building. But it is sort, the sort of thing that we might otherwise contemplate where you have a typical parapet wall that comes off of a flat roof and a very tall mechanical unit that is screened in a very obvious manner. And then the stacks above, and I think it leads to the kind of images that you're seeing up in the pictures up, up above, which
Right.
we didn't, we didn't feel was as sensitive to the, to the community.
So that I, I think I've expressed my, my concern. I think as you get into more, some more specifics and you cut some, some additional building sections, we'll begin to see what that number really is. If it's, if it is fifty five or if it's something less than that. But my second question in this area is, so this is the zoning of the property, both Boulder Valley Cop Plan and the city zoning. It's, it's an industrial area. It's, it's a light industrial and it's a general industrial. And so I wonder, you say you're not interested in an industrial vocabulary or an industrial aesthetic, and yet you're in an industrial zone. So can you talk about, about that?
Sure. So I mean, in, in terms of the architecture, is that really where the question's coming from, ML?
Well, yeah, I mean, use is the use, right?
I got you.
You got what you've got, but I'm talking about the, the building form. I think that's in the, in the vein in which it was used in the presentation saying that you didn't want it to look industrial. And this is an industrial zone. So what's, what's your thought?
Danica, you want to take this or I'll be happy to as well?
Sure. I mean, I, I, I think as one of the strategic advisors on this project, I'm part of the site review criteria update and the excellence in design and having been on planning board, I, I know that our community is desiring higher quality architecture, whether it's an industrial building, a residential building, an office building. So I've actually encouraged this team to really think about high quality materials, nature inspired materials. Conscious Bay has a very strong desire to build to a standard that's very sustainable. So a lot of the materials are like the the CLT and the, you know, the rocks. I mean, we're actually proposing rocks as a structure to bring the property out of the floodplain. So the idea is that this is an enduring building that will last a hundred years versus twenty years. So it, it is, I, I think it still looks industrial, but it is having this high quality design that I think our community is craving. So I will take ownership for some of this. I also think Stantec is an incredible designer, but all of this glass, this permeability, you know, a buy right project wouldn't have a lot of this architectural influence. And so this is, I think, again, you're seeing a lot of details at a conceptual phase. So your feedback on materiality and massing and structural form is really critical. The height is again, up to fifty five. The whole building isn't like that classic fifty five foot four story flat roof building. So we are trying to change the paradigm a little bit and I recognize it, it feels different. So I would, we would love your feedback on where to go from here.
So I guess I, I I understand what you're talking about insofar as materials and, and that sort of thing that is not in question. I think the goals that you have put out there for, well, you didn't say what kind of lead you were looking to obtain, but your energy goals, your, your durability of materials. But within that, I'm, I'm seeing some contradictions. And so that's really what I'm questioning. This is an industrial area. There's nothing wrong with seeing, you know, the, the guts of industry, as it were, there are extraordinary buildings that have sort of celebrate the industrial nature of the of the project. And let me think about the, right, the the Pompano Center and stuff like that. So that's not my question. My question is just, I, I think that the fifty five foot height in order to kind of reduce the industrial appearance may not have as much merit as, as you're proposing. So I'll, I'll just leave, I'll just leave that question out there. I have some questions about the site. And this, is there somebody else who wants to talk about?
Maybe we'll, we'll circulate around and see if there are some other.
Thank you for your answer, Danica.
Sure.
I can also mention that we will, in the next phase of this discussion, have the opportunity to tell the applicant our general response, thoughts about what they've come up with. Rather than engaging in a discussion with them at this point about specifics of that nature.
It's John, just to clarify, this is, the purpose of this portion is for clarifying questions to the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Sarah.
Go to Mark first and then I'll go after Mark.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Um, thank you. So the applicant has exactly the view that I wanted on here. My question, based on this view, I appreciate the design in the consolidation of entry and exit points for vehicular traffic, creating just one, as far as I can tell, just one crossing there where the multi-use path and pedestrians and people would have to cross the roadway. My question is, in your, in any of your sketches, concepts, et cetera, did you ever consider moving, and I'm looking at my page thirty seven of sixty five in the packet and the asphalt makes it a little clearer. What I'm, my question is, did you ever consider moving that single drive lane farther to the east so that more people would would be able to access, congregate, move about the entrance to the building without having what, depending upon the time of day, could be a significant traffic flow bisecting that the front of the building with the tree parking area, et cetera.
I think it's worth showing the floor plan as well in explaining the flow as to how how people come into the site.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's a really great question, Mark. And it's actually something that we are thinking about in particularly because we got a comment from staff review about the drop off and trying not to co-mix some of the pedestrian traffic that will be coming across from the parking area. So just to clarify, and as Daniel mentioned, we'll, we'll have the entrance into the site. Knowing that we want to put a drop off on the building side, we'll likely loop people around, whether that's around and through the parking lot or providing a easier to navigate kind of a loop right here at the beginning of the building and then have a drop off. The other thing that we're providing with that rain and pollinator garden is really meant to be sort of an avenue or a front porch of the building so that we create some really nice views as well as we're pulling anybody who may have accessibility challenges from some of these accessible spots and then pulling them into directly into the entrance. We also have the service and the fire lane, which is, needs to be right up against the building or as close as we can get it. And then the service and loading area is back here. So the trucks and heavier traffic will go right on by the front entrance and then come to the back of the site. So it's definitely something that we are thinking about. And how perhaps we just need to create a little bit more space, a little bit more breathing room for, for all of those other uses, knowing that we're going to have a big conflict here of all of that traffic. Something we'll work on for site plan.
Yeah. Okay, that, that was my only question. I have a comment, but I'll save it till we get to the, towards the end. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, Sarah, see your hand is there?
So I just want to ask about the traffic study. I know you've requested a small parking reduction. And you still want two hundred and twenty six spaces. But the traffic study, if I read it correctly, suggests an additional thousand cars every day. But only about a hundred coming in or coming out at essentially, sorry, I walk to work, so I can't remember the words for traffic jams anymore during rush hour. Sorry. And so I'm wondering, first of all, what, why you need as much parking as you have requested and what, what's the, when were those other nine hundred cars going to be entering and exiting the, the, the parking area?
I can address the question related as to why we have as many parking spaces. First is the code requirement. Then we're asking for a reduction that seems reasonable to us to cater to the market that we're after. So it is market responsive. We could certainly consider a little bit more parking reduction. Also, our intent is to, you know, call this, we're within a quarter of a mile of the Boulder Junction Transit Station. So we do believe that a lot of people are actually going to walk to the site or micro mobility or bikes or bicycle. In fact, we would be open to consider a bicycle station on the site as well. But, but certainly from a market standpoint, it's, it's critical. So anyway, and then we can talk about the, the traffic. So we want to have our traffic engineer on the, on the call. But either Sharon or Shannon, can you guys address?
And I'll just provide one high level comment that the FAR on the site is point five. So there is a limited square footage. So you know, I think to, I think ML's comment before, you know, what do you do with the rest of the site? I think we're certainly willing to look at a parking reduction, but there, this zoning also drives a large parking lot with a small building. And so with the, you know, point five FAR is very low. And so you can look at the project next to us and we're trying to kind of change that paradigm by creating more trees and canopies and parking, but this is still an industrial, very low FAR. But I'm certainly, we're willing at site review to look at the appropriate parking reduction and turn some of that back over to open space or you know, other uses besides parking.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure we'll be talking about it amongst ourselves after we finish questions with you. So thank you very much for that explanation.
Okay, I'm looking to see if there's any other hands up here. Laura?
Sorry, I had to find my unmute button. A question for the applicant. First of all, I will also say that there's a lot to like about the building and thank you for the presentation. Did you request any kind of bicycle parking reduction? I thought I saw that, but then I'm trying to search through the document and I can't find it. I'm seeing a no. Okay, that was my question. Thank you, Danica.
Okay. Other questions? I'm trying to see, look at everybody's hands. I don't see any. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation and information. And I think now we will move to our public hearing. So anybody who wishes to speak to this project now is your time. And it would be good if you also could describe any relationship you have with the applicant in terms of either professional or personal terms.
It looks like, John, we do have someone who raised their hand. We have Kurt Norbeck. And so I am, in addition to what John stated, if you have any relationship, but also state your name and your address or where you live, the area that you live, whatever you prefer. So Kurt, I'm going to unmute you. I've unmuted you. So you have three minutes.
Great. Thank you, Kurt Norbeck, again, speaking on behalf of Community Cycles this time. I live at seven, seven, seven Delwood Avenue and I have no relationship with the applicant, although I have served on the Site Review Focus Committee with Dana Kapow. So you should have received an email from Sue Prant, the Executive Director of Community Cycles, about the connections plan and the relationship to this project. The T VAP connections plan is thoughtful in breaking up the super box in this area, making the space much more permeable and accessible, especially to people walking and biking. And you can see the success of this in the core Boulder Junction area. If you compare what it looks like today to what it was before we started reconstructing and, and breaking up that very large area. So as Danica pointed out, whatever gets built here will probably be here for the next hundred years, hopefully. So we need to think long term about connections and not be deterred by short term obstacles. In particular, we're not going to have immediately a complete network, but that's the way this always works, right? We build pieces at a time and we fill in a network as we go. That said, we understand the challenges of building a full street as shown in the T VAP plan. So we would support amending the connections plan to change the road to a multi-use plan, a multi-use path. But we strongly oppose the complete elimination of any connection on the west side. And Sue Prant, the Executive Director, had a conversation with the developer, is my understanding. I was not privy to this. And I think, my understanding is she was led to believe that the developer would support a multi-use path on that west side in place of the planned street. So that was the context in which we wrote our letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks wishing to speak?
I don't see any hands at this moment, but yes, we do have another hand and we have. And we have, yes, we have one more hand. We have Lynn Segal. And Lynn, I have unmuted you. I'm going to restart your time at three minutes.
Lynn Segal, sixth and Dewey. You know, there's enough incentive in this area already to live. Yesterday's Mapleton Hill Living features a couple who are in San Francisco in the tech industry and saw a big billboard that said, Californians move to Boulder. It's the best. Love Boulderites. Being the caring family that they are, they were, they obliged. So I don't think there's any reason that you have to do any height exemptions, parking exemptions, open space exemptions, anything with these projects. There's plenty of incentive for people in Boulder already. In fact, there was a piece in the paper the other day about all the, the healthcare tech industries coming here. In fact, this father in this household is in the healthcare tech. So let's consider what the, what the actual height prescriptive measures would be. Like if you have a pitched roof, that's great. Maybe it will be more, you know, and notwithstanding all the work that all the people have done is great. It's wonderful looking and all. But, you know, I just measured the, the ceilings in my living room and it's two feet short of eight feet, two inches short of eight feet. That's more than enough ceiling height. You know, I'm from Seattle. In Seattle, you might have a reason that you want more of a feeling of height inside a building. In Colorado, all you gotta do if you want a feeling of height is to step outside. You know, it's a semi-arid climate. It's like, get out, you know, and have, I mean, and I like your idea of the outdoor spaces for meetings and stuff. Maybe you can actually put more of that dynamic into your project. But the other thing I came across as listening to all of this was how, how you can just, how you can set up a, first of all, a hundred years. A hundred years is nothing. All of this energy, this full lifecycle analysis, like all the energy put into this for a hundred years? Hello? This should be five hundred years. You know, I've seen places all over Boulder that are changing the interior. They just rip the stuff out and it goes to the landfill and they get their new use there. These developers are coming from out of state, all over their, their equity, you know, private equity firms. They're, they, they're from, it's probably in the Oz and they're probably getting ten years capital gains for free. And they can sink money into this stuff and it just drives up the cost. And why not have the, the person that's going to be the tenant deriving what the space needs to be? And the, and the height limit as far as the split hairs that Charles Farrell was talking about with the interior, set it up so that here's the space you get. If you want to be creative and put pitched roofs, if you want to be creative and interiorized, mechanical, then do it within our prescriptions.
Okay, Lynn, you need to wrap it up now.
Yeah, and then it's just a matter of what, what aesthetic you like. But there can't be these arguments about, you know, height limitations that are really unclear. It needs to be crystal clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak this evening? John, I'm not seeing any other hands.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. And I'd like to just remind the board that staff has identified two major key issues that we should be thinking about, and we can talk about that together with our comments to the applicant. The first is whether this proposed concept plan is compatible with goals, objectives, and recommendations of Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And the second is whether this is consistent with the intent of the Transit Village Area Plan, the Area Connections Plan, and whether the proposal provides the intended multimodal mobility and access envisioned in the transportation plan, and whether Planning Board would support an amendment to that plan. So I'll open it up and look forward to your thoughts. George?
Yeah, I, I want to ask a clarifying question of staff, just so, so we're clear on it, because this is in concept review still. And, and, and we talked, we touched on it with the applicant around lab space versus office space. And I want to understand clearly those uses from staff's perspective as it relates to if this went through concept review and all of a sudden just became a hundred and twelve thousand square feet of office. Is that permitted here? What, what, what are the, what are the trigger, what's the mix?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. Thanks, George. So professional office isn't allowed in this particular zone district. And the way that the uses have been described to us seems to fit neatly into our industrial category.
So, so is there a, is there a definition in our code relative to the percentage of office that can exist in light industrial as it relates to the build out?
No, we would have to be able to make a finding that it was an accessory to the actual industrial or life science use. So there's not a hard, fast percentage. We would just need to understand that the way that the floor area is organized, that the principal use of the building is really that of a life science kind of industrial type use.
Got it. So as, if, if I were to interpret that principal use or, or versus accessory use, conceptually, would, would it be fair to say that it'd be under fifty percent office? Is that, that would be a way to think about it, just to frame it? I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that that's unreasonable. We kind of know it when we see it when we're looking at the actual floor plans as part of the site review package, but that, that's not an unreasonable way to look at it. Although I just want to be clear that the code doesn't actually specify a percentage like that. Thanks, Charles. You bet.
Okay, I've just been reminded that it's normal for us to offer the applicant a chance to rebut anything or respond to things they may have heard in the public hearing. So I think we'll, we'll offer that opportunity. I hope you can deal with it in less than five minutes. And thereafter, it would be good if the applicant to, to turn off their video.
Excellent. Yes, thank you for the opportunity, John. I do like, I would like to address my conversation with Sue Prant regarding the, the connection between the north and the south. At the time yesterday, we had a conversation and she advocated for a connection between the north and the south. And we agreed that rate signalized intersection on the rail was a reasonable way of, of connecting, which we, us, as developers and, and would advocate for. So we were definitely on board with that at the time, after further conversations with our engineers, a conversation with BNSF, a conversation with the city. It became clear that that was just not going to happen and we were asked to actually remove that connection. So, so that's why the difference between our conversation last, yesterday between me and Sue and what we actually showed on the plan today. So we could certainly continue a, the conversation of a connection between the multi-use path south of the rail to go on the west side of our building. Now, I do want to caveat that the west side of our, our building is not a, a piece of land that is owned by us. It's a land that is owned by our neighbors, of which we have a, an Eastman too. And it's not a complete Eastman that takes us all the way to Walnut Street. So if we were to consider a connection, which we would advocate for, it would be along the west side of the building and we would have to have further conversations with our neighbors as well.
Okay, well, thank you. That's very interesting. Laura, you have some thoughts here?
I would like to start with a couple of clarifying questions for staff. So first, following up on what Daniel just said, am I understanding correctly that it is staff's recommendation from the city to remove that connection from the T-VAP? Do I understand that correctly or is there some nuance?
Yes, you understand that correctly. That would be staff's recommendation that that connection is tactically infeasible to build and we would support its modification to remove.
Thank you, Edward. My second clarifying question is maybe a little more difficult and probably I need Hella for this. So I'm looking at the code section around the height and what is required of a building in industrial general that wants to go up to fifty five feet without doing community benefit. And I don't know if I can put this on screen, Hella, or if you can put it on screen. This is nine dash two dash fourteen in site review and it's little B. I think one E.
I can show the screen if that's.
That would be great. Yeah. So the height modification section for the building in industrial general. I want to look at the precise words because I'm a detail person. And I want to understand.
Could I ask Danica to turn off your video and maybe Shannon also? And Mr. Eisenman?
Thank you, Hella. And if you could highlight that section, little I, I. Am I reading this correctly that it says the way that they get an exception or that would qualify for an exception is that the building is in the industrial general zone, which it is, and has two or fewer stories, which it does? And then there's the conjunction or, or the height is necessary for manufacturing, testing, or other industrial process or equipment. Do they have to meet both of those things that they're both less than two stories or less? And that the height is necessary, emphasis on necessary, for their equipment? Or do they just have to meet one or the other and they automatically get fifty five feet if they're two or fewer stories?
I read it as one or the other. This only allows them to seek a height modification. So there are still other standards in the site review criteria that talk about compatibility of height with buildings in the area and so forth. So there are additional considerations that are just in the general site review factors that you guys can take into consideration. But yeah, just looking at that little Roman two, either or could potentially be met.
Okay, so this condition that the height is necessary for their equipment does not have to be met. So they qualify potentially for this height, this extra height by virtue of being in the IG and having two or two or fewer stories. But they still have other site criteria to met. They don't automatically, we don't automatically have to say yes. Okay, Hella, it would be helpful for me if you could point me to what are those other things that we're supposed to be basing this decision on?
Yeah, so in nine two fourteen H. It's H two, it has the site design, site review criteria, and then it's kind of divided into subject areas. And capital F is building design, livability, and relationship to the existing or proposed surrounding area. And then the Roman one says the building height, mass, scale, orientation, architecture, and configuration are compatible with the existing character of the area or the character established by adopted design guidelines or plans for the area. So that's the first one. And the second one is the height of buildings is in general proportion to the height of existing buildings and the proposed or projected heights of approved buildings or approved plans or design guidelines for the immediate area. And finally, I think this one might come in a little bit, well, I don't know that it applies here, but three talks about the orientation of buildings, saying that it minimizes shadows on and blocking off views from adjacent properties. So height can play a role in that as well.
Okay, thank you, Hella. Very helpful.
Thank you. Sarah?
Okay, thank you. And fortunately, we don't have to make any decisions today. We can just give some feedback. So I'm just going to run through my feedback. So I agree with staff that it's important to pull the entrance forward to address the public realm. I thought that was a very good point that Shabnan made, and I'd like to put myself behind, it, it, I want to stand with her on that. I want to say how much I appreciate the tree lawns and the, what I call the free range trees pictured in the proposal. I would be very disappointed if those became graded trees at site review. I think we must, we have to figure out how to create connections. The, it seems clear from what Edward has told us, which is that the proposed multi-use path is never going to happen because it's in the railroads right of way and that nobody's prepared to do the work and spend the time and the money to work, to, to, to figure out how to get across the, the railroad itself to the other side of T-VAP, which we are also going, staff's going to be looking at in the coming year or two. But I don't think that means we should be walking away from the responsibilities of creating and supporting connections between this part of, of the middle of Boulder to what's on the northern side of the railroad. And so I think it'd be very helpful if TAB were to take a look at what we can do, what, what can be done, maybe create a multi-use path that goes through some of these parcels. You know, to Kurt's point, this stuff gets built over time. This might be a place to, this might be a proposal, a site at which to start building a multi-use path on, on the south side of the railroad. So I also, I don't really know the, how to, how to address the height. I mean, the building looks very pretty as currently designed. It's a little hard for me to figure out if, if the, if the lab, labs and the office spaces were essentially in separate buildings, if that might actually bring some community benefit to the city. Because I think it, it does seem unfortunate that the city does not benefit from the fifty five foot height of the building, buildings. And I'm also concerned about the large, the, the significant parking and would hope that you all would come back with a parking option that might be partnered with some sort of mobility hub that might include a bicycle or any other kind of motorized cycle opportunity that could connect people who somehow live in the city and work at this facility to get around. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, okay, so I agree kind of when we're looking at the second item staff called out that there's room for improvement on connections. That also seems to be an ongoing dialogue between the applicant and staff on that. So I'll just trust that good work is happening and when and if this comes back, we'll have more to see there and hopefully some improvements around the building itself. I was a biology major for a while, so I completely understand why you need vents. You know, we're talking about hoods. We all just lived through a pandemic. The ventilation that's required for life sciences is pretty intensive. I think some of the points we've heard from other people about how exactly that would look in the boat form is a great question. I also, I'm far beat for me not to defer to ML in architecture, but I thought her points that you can make. I don't know, I keep thinking about like the Tate Modern, which is a reimagined building. But you know, you can do interesting things in industrial forms, although I also appreciate that example of the CU building, which they kind of did in the aesthetic of the University of Colorado, where they concealed some of those industrial uses. I personally enjoyed the roof line and the gabled architecture. I liked that when you're going up to the fifty five foot, that you didn't make it a big box. I would, I appreciate that. It's something we ask for a lot when people come in and ask for site modifications. It's also often just maximizing square footage internally. And that's why we get a lot of very uniform kind of of the moment architecture around Boulder that I don't find very interesting to look at much of the time. So I appreciate that variation of reflet alongside the height request. What else was I going to say? I mean, as I look at this area and I think about consistency with the surrounding area, I think of the county building, I think of police headquarters, I think of the Peloton, I think of Ball. You know, I think of Foot Health Hospital, I think of Twenty Ninth Street and so on. And so for me, provided it's a good design, I'm not terribly bothered by fifty five, especially if you break up the roof line. It does seem consistent with the adjacency to Boulder Junction and what we're planning for T-VAP. I really like that it's preserving a light industrial use that we're bringing industrial back in because we, we definitely need housing. I'm never anti-housing, but it can be, I, I get kind of freaked out when we start losing all our industrial. So I appreciate that this is an industrial to industrial and even an increase in square footage of industrial space within the city rather than a loss. What else did I want to mention? I agree, Georgie, I think was mentioning it that there's I agree, Georgie, I think was mentioning it that there's those two buildings kind of, I can't remember if it's along the western side. But they kind of look more massive. I would love to see those broken up. I appreciated that perspective looking to the west. I think again, ML's point was good, but I kind of enjoyed the quirkiness of them almost looking like they're each little houses with little chimney stacks. I thought it was fun, you know, but then when you look at those two large buildings, they're they're just kind of the straight run of massive building and coming back, I would personally enjoy seeing that broken up if you can do it and preserve the pro forma. Yeah, and I I just appreciated that it was something different. You know, it kind of creates a sense of place. I think people would know what building you were talking about if you tried to describe it to someone and we don't always get to see anything this fully conceptualized at concept review and that interferes with the whole concept idea. So I appreciate how far you took it. And I think that covers my comments.
Thank you. Other thoughts? ML?
Thank you. I I just want to kind of go through the things that I I support and the things that I am have would like some some more specificity on. I think key issue two has been well articulated and I'm in agreement that it needs it needs some connection somewhere, somehow, and that the staff will work on that. So I think that that is, I support what's been said on that. I'm going to speak to key issue number one. So just talk about the height one more time. I just think that it would be nice to see some specificity around the height considerations. You know, what? I know that you don't have a tenant yet, but what kinds of things are driving a particular to a particular number? Is it because fifty-five is max? Or I mean, what is real about the the height that you're proposing? So I think that that would be nice to see is if you could put some specificity to that. And in the in the immediate area. There's not a lot of tall buildings right in that in that area. There it is still pretty industrial. The one-story you know, metal buildings and kind of a low. I understand that the FAR leaves you with a lot of sight. And and thus the parking looks like it might even be taking up more than what the current parking is, but I I don't think that this is a site that necessarily should have a very tall building. And you know, fifty-five feet is is it'd be nice to see a context drawing to show what's behind it, what's across the street and look at the height relative to what the actual context is. And just to get a better sense of it, I mean, we can talk conceptually, but I it'd be nice to get more specificity around that. I think that the I support your general direction of materials and where you're heading with the sustain of sustainability and the energy use. I think that that is going to be a stellar, a stellar goal to meet. And I really appreciate appreciate that. And lastly, the intention of what you want to do with the site insofar as the trees and the pollinator gardens and the opportunity for there to be public education on the property and to kind of celebrate what the building is all about and and let the public participate in that. And I think that if if those kinds of ideas are are evolved and developed, I think then we come kind of full circle back to let's make sure that people can get there safely. And that we deal with, you know, the the access and 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 transportation and accessibility of the site. But thank you so much for your for your hard work and good work on this project.
Thank you. Lisa, looks like you have something.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, there was a note I forgot to go on and I will behave myself and get my hand down. But ML, something you just said made me think of it. And that was that I so appreciated seeing you know, little tree lawns or tree strips instead of the sad things that trees are planted in to die. And also seeing the solar panels and seeing how far you had taken the sustainability plan. I often harp on that, you know, and we'll often hear from applicants. So don't worry, we're going to hit code, you know, we'll we'll meet the very stringent codes of Boulder and that's wonderful. But I really appreciate actually seeing what your plans are to do that and to go above and beyond. So I just wanted to applaud the applicant for that. And also for anyone else watching this or listening to this later or looking at minutes, please do more of that because it makes a big difference whether it's a concept review or or actual final site review. So thank you.
Okay. Mark?
I'll try to be brief by concurring with Sarah in regard to the connections. I think the connections to the north. It's it's a challenge. It has to be figured out whether it's negotiated with the railroad, whether it is a connection along foothills. Whatever it is, we have to have something other than many blocks to the west to thirtieth. And then north to Pearl and then back east. If I want to go to Sanitas and have a beer. Or I get to trespass crossing the railroad tracks, which if we have no connections, there's going to be, the railroad will just have to deal with a lot of connection, a lot of trespassing. And railroads frequently try to drag limbs, build rocks, make it inconvenient and difficult for people to cross their tracks and people just do anyway. That's just they cut fences, whatever it is. They go across them. So if we can figure out as a community in partnership with the railroad, how to create a connection, that's that's critical. I concur with Lisa on the building shape and size. The that southern portion certainly, that's an interesting point. But I don't have a concern with the height and especially given the kind of mechanical, I I can appreciate an attractive industrial building. But I've never been a big fan of really tall stacks going ten fifteen feet above a roof line that you can see from the street. To me, that's just not an architectural thing that I enjoy. So I would I anyway, I don't have a problem with the building design. The, in fact, I support the building design and I appreciate your your real commitment to sustainability. The thing that I want to add or encourage is that you carry that that same commitment into your TDM plan when you come back for site review. If you come back at site review using the draft TDM criteria of package A and package B, and I'm still learning about this draft plan that's never been adopted. But yet developers use it as though it's kind of part of our code. And you choose, you check the box and say, yeah, for a couple of years, we're going to do eco passes. I will be deeply disappointed and I would like to see your TDM plan to challenge you to go beyond what is suggested in what I consider to be somewhat outdated TDM document. And encourage you to take into account car charging, bike charging, long-term secure bike storage. Just any number of ways, including your own first and last mile transportation systems in partnership with ride shares and partnership with scooter companies, bike companies. But while this site has good transit nearby, it is not adjacent to great transit. I mean, so you, if I walk up Walnut over to Arapahoe, okay, that's that's a that's ten fifteen minute walk. Nothing wrong with that, but it's not like it's out the front door. So anyway, I just encourage you to have a really robust TDM plan incorporated into the site. When you come back for site.
Laura?
Thank you. I I do have a couple of questions for staff and then I do have a couple of comments for the applicant. So I I'm reading in the plan, just thinking about the connections and I agree with my colleagues who feel that connectivity north to south. Despite those railroad tracks is important. I just wanted to get a little clarity on something that's in the memo. It talks about on page three of sixty-five in this agenda item. Boulder Junction is now accessible via the new Junction Place Bridge that can be reached from the site through Walnut Street and Thirty-Second Street. So a couple of blocks away, there's a bridge. What kind of bridge is that? Pedestrian, bicycles? What can cross on that bridge?
So that's actually a combination of both vehicle and bike pad bridge for the junction placed to thirty-second. That was recently completed through Transportation Capital Project. It's a crossing of the Boulder Slough Irrigation and Drainage Facility.
Okay. And is that, sorry for my lack of, I was trying to pull up a map. I didn't get there. Is that by the spot, Jim? Where is that connection?
That connection, if you're familiar with the REV project on thirtieth and that is east of there. And it splits between the apartment buildings that were built along Pearl, south of Pearl there. So it splits between those and that junction place alignment.
Okay, all right. I'll I'll find a map and I'll look at it because I'm not familiar with that building, but I appreciate that, Edward. Thank you. I'm working on my my local knowledge.
I always describe it by the location of the Nissan that was a garage for a long time.
See, all these local landmarks I need to learn. Thank you, John. So Hella, would you be able to send us that code section that you said that we should be looking at when we consider the height? In addition to the fact that it's two stories and industrial, there were some other provisions you said we should look at. But we don't need to look go into that tonight, but I do want to let the applicant know that that I at least am going to try to stick to the code and and think about this height request in terms of whatever that code section is that Hella recommends that we we look at. And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to pull it up during the meeting. I'm not that quick. And I don't know whether considerations like the architecture is beautiful and it hides the mechanical and it mimics the flatirons. If those are things that would be considered under those sections of the code, but I'm going to be thinking very carefully about it. So that that's one thing that I would recommend to the applicant for when they come back for site review is how they justify that height request in terms of that code section. And I and I want to emphasize that I really do appreciate all the things that my colleagues have mentioned that are seem to be quite wonderful about this project. Being that zero, I really liked the outdoor gym, which nobody has mentioned, but I think those are really great features for both people who work on site and the community, the local community, if it's near where people would be walking by and that they could be encouraged to use it as a community amenity. Like I said, there are residents who walk to connect to the Boulder Creek Path down Walnut. And so I think that could be a very nice community amenity, just just my personal opinion. And I like that you're you're thinking about the the human needs of the people who will occupy the space and their meeting areas and 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 all of that. I think it people will be very lucky to work in this building. I do think that, you know, this area currently has a lot of aging older architectural styles, not all that interesting, one-story, you know, industrial spaces. And so I do really appreciate that you're taking one of those less interesting industrial spaces and trying to do something really wonderful and creative with. So I really want to put that appreciation out there. And I think those are all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. George? We, you're muted, George.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be brief too. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this as brief as possible and concur with my colleagues. Where 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 I think the applicant's done great work in sustainability, tree lawns, permio pavers. And the overall use being this light industrial use and 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 I I appreciate all those things. And also the design overall. A few areas I'd like to focus in on. I I will support what what Sarah and Mark both talked about as far as connections go. I also want to talk about parking and FAR because they're intertwined on this site, right? You've got you've got a relatively low FAR point five. And you've got a relatively modest parking reduction at twenty percent. And then you've got a height issue that at least a number of us have recognized that we might have some concerns about. And so I think there are solutions that the applicant could refine this design by potentially encroaching further into the lot. Or you might do a reduction of thirty percent of the parking. Because I think that overall the city and the planning board probably likely to be supportive of that. And that would give you more area on the site to then modify the height of the building a little bit and create some architectural interest and also buffer the height where it's needed versus where it's not as not as needed. And I think that's important from my perspective. Because when we talk about compatibility to ML's point and other things, you know, it it's not clear that that fifty-five feet height, at least to me, is on a monolithic scale like this building is necessarily compatible with the buildings surrounding it. And my concern is twofold, both as it relates to compatibility of this project, but then also making this project a tent pole. Because as Hella had brought up in that compatibility, these projects, if they get approved at fifty-five feet, then become the tent pole for the area by which all other projects are measured. And we create a zone that might have had a great view of the flatirons to one that will be eventually obfuscated at that fifty-five foot level because that's that's the way this all works. So I I would, I'd like the applicant and their consultants to think long and hard about that because that that is a that is a particular concern of mine. And I also think that the site at point five FAR actually presents some unique opportunities to mitigate those concerns. And that's that's by and large, my only comment, I, you know, I I understand the applicant as developer myself, the idea of preserving flexibility. But I think the intent of allowing for these mechanical units and and this in this height, at least when it was going through, I think a lot of the intent was there to support these types of uses, but not necessarily abuse that height limit across the site where it's not necessary. And I'm not suggesting the applicant is necessarily abusing it, but I think there's opportunities to refine it. Other than that, I I think it's a it's a really neat project. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, you have a thought there?
Yes, I have one last thought, and I think this is more for all of my colleagues on planning board. What people would think of referring this project to the DAB to get their design input?
Yeah, well, we can, we can talk about that at the conclusion of this. I I'd like to give my thoughts on this also. And that is for, it's almost amazing, but I haven't found a single thing that my colleagues have come with that I disagree with. So that must be a real first. But I would like to point out a couple suggestions. One is that I I think the comments and concerns about height are realistic. I would say that I am certainly willing to consider the need for the height, but I would like some justification and some of the ways in which it could be justified would be to look at the labs that CU has recently built, for example, or that have been built elsewhere and and take a look at and see what sort of ceiling heights and how they're dealing with the mechanical issues. And I I would regard those as quite persuasive in in a matter like this where that's being used to try to justify a height arrangement. And secondly, I I agree very much with my colleagues on the importance of the transit arrangements in the area. What we heard from staff earlier tonight was that it may be that the only realistic way to get across the railroad is is on the bridge. The forty-seventh, the Foothills Parkway Bridge on the on the south. on the, on the south, I'm sorry, on the west side for which there is currently no bike or multi-use path. That may be the only realistic way to to move people across the tracks and that's something that should be carefully considered, but it's not obvious to me that it's something that this applicant has to be responsible for for the reasons that Hella gave us earlier in the evening. Those are my thoughts. I think we should conclude this this session right now with a real short consideration of the issues that staff asked us to address. There were two of them. One is whether the concept plan is compatible with Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And the other is whether it's consistent with the Transit Village Area Plan. And I'd suggest we take a quick round. Everyone can say briefly what they think about those two issues and because I think we owe it to staff to respond to them on those. So I'd be interested in, okay, Sarah, what do you think?
So I I feel that it's compatible certainly with the land use map and three twelve urban forests and then the Boulder Valley Comp Plan goals that staff highlighted. I I'm a little concerned about compatibility with two point two five improving mobility grid and connections. Three point three two protection of air quality, which has to do with whatever is going to come out of those chimneys. And the additional thousand cars per day that are estimated. Little concern this won't advance four point oh one, which is reducing climate action, reducing GHGs again with the single occupancy, the the cars. Little concerned it's not meeting six point oh one all mode transportation system and complete streets. And six twelve transportation impacts are mitigated. I think most of those are addressable, but but they're not fully addressed in the, they're not advanced in the proposal as it's currently conceptualized.
Thank you. Others, other thoughts on those issues? Mark?
Um, in short, the first question compatibility of Boulder Valley Cooperates of Plan, my answer is yes. And on the second one. It's, the answer is is no, but not to, not because of the applicant's design. But rather from these frustrating external sources of making it difficult to actually realize what the goals of the TVAP and the TMP are. So I I would say, given the constraints, I would still, I would, I would say is generally consistent with the intent. But I I would hope that creativity of city staff, the applicant and some negotiation with the rail the rail line would be able to somehow create a a connection.
Okay, Laura?
I don't currently have any concerns about compatibility with the B V C P. That's going to depend on the final package that comes back, but but I I don't think you should anticipate me raising a big stink about anything there with regard to the the TVAP. I agree with Mark that, you know, it would be great to have a connection there and it sounds like there are some considerable obstacles. I do think that, you know, it sounds like if anything were possible, it would be a multimodal path, a multi-use path. But the crossing of the railroad is an obstacle, at least in this point in time, maybe in a hundred years it won't be. I do think with the amount of open space on this site, that is something that could be addressed in the future if that railroad crossing ever becomes more feasible. So I would not anticipate asking the applicant to create that crossing at this time personally.
Thank you. ML?
Um, thank you. I think I've expressed the concerns that I have. I think fundamentally, key issue number one. Is it compatible with the objectives of the Boulder Valley Complan? I I would say it it does. And I I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the height. So that's been said. Key issue number two. I'm in agreement with, you know, it's a tough one. We would like connectivity and the obvious and kind of the one that we're all wanting to be able to cross and go and go north is is highly problematic. So I think there hopefully a solutions can come forth from key issue number two, but I don't see any, any, any deal stoppers from either issue at this point.
Okay, thank you. Where are we? George?
Oh, mine will be brief. Number one, as with my colleagues, I'm, you know, I don't see any issues necessarily with that. Number two, I'm agreeing with ML and Mark and Laura in general around connectivity, but by the, by the way, it's laid out, I think in general, it meets those right now. And we've got to look at sort of what can be done and what's possible. So that's it for me.
Okay. Lisa, did we hear your thoughts?
Not yet. Um, well, you heard earlier thoughts. So yeah, I agree overall with B V C P. I'm not concerned. Some things that I thought were attractive about the project that I hope to see continue forward as the building design. I appreciated your attention to it being something that you hope to build and have last for a while and under site review criteria that will come up. I agree with what my colleagues have also said about you know, the importance of the pedestrian experience, which again will come up with site design and site review and circulation and so on. I realize you have constraints on you that are not of the city's making or the applicant's making, but I hope you come up with kind of some creative solutions to that. And and yeah, I think I really appreciated John's comment earlier, just kind of, you know, if we could maybe see some internal schematics or some examples of existing uses in Boulder that require that kind of height. I think that would help us to, you know, kind of understand because I think ML's point is kind of good, you know, do we just stretch it up to fifty-five because fifty-five is a limit? So why don't we? Which maybe isn't terribly compelling, you know, so I would like to hear more about that when you guys come back exactly how you landed on that. Besides just getting as much workable space and giving us an interesting roofline, which I still appreciate. But yeah, no, no major concern to this time and excited to see refinements as we move forward.
Okay, I'll just conclude by saying I agree with my colleagues on just about everything I've heard tonight. I I forgot to mention one point in my earlier comments and that that is with respect to the parking. I really hope you're going to unbundle the parking from from the rent to encourage less use of it. But we'll talk about that when you come back in site review. So, thank you very much. Laura?
John, when is the appropriate time to think about whether we would refer this to the dab in between now and site review?
Now is a good time for that. Thanks for for bringing that up. In fact, it may be that we want to make a formal move. Would you care to move that?
Well, I I probably would, but I would love to hear if there's any discussion quickly. I know that we have another media item and it's nine o'clock, but.
Yeah, okay. ML, you have some thoughts?
I do have some thoughts. I would, I would not be supportive of sending this to Deb. I think that the client has a stellar design team. And I would give them the opportunity to respond to the concerns that we have at this point before sending it off to a design advisory board that I think it might be a premature to do that at this point. I think that the design team that is in place on the client's side is highly skilled. And I feel confident that they will be able to address the questions that we've raised.
Okay, any, any other thoughts?
I think I'm supportive of that. I'd like it to be reserved, sent to design to dab at some point. But I think the applicant has some work to do ahead of them based on our commentary. And I want to make sure that gets incorporated into their thoughts and process before it goes to dab, at least from my perspective, because I think that will be more productive than having dad get something that we got that we had some concerns about because I think they've got an opportunity to change things up prior to that. So that would be, that'd be my.
And just clarification, I guess I I don't know the whole process and what you're saying makes sense to me. So I guess my, if I were to move to send it to dab, I certainly wouldn't be moving to send this version to dab. I would be moving to send whatever the applicant's next version before site review is to dab before they bring it to us for site review. This, I don't know how people feel about that, but but I certainly take it to heart that we would not want to send this version that we have already given them comments on to dab.
Gee, I think Lisa had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember now just off of Laura's comment because I agree. I don't, I think it's a little premature. I don't necessarily mind that looking at it at some point, but I don't think it's time for them to see it. Can other members of planning board remind me, do we typically make that decision at site review that hasn't gone through dab? Is that when we say we want this to go to dab or what? What's our typical timing?
I think if you wait until site review, it's too late because they're coming to planning board for approval at site review. So I think it has to be sort of, if we're going to do, if we're going to suggest this. I think you want to have it be something that the applicant completes before they come to for site review.
That's correct. Typically, when we see projects referred to dab, it's usually between concept plan and their site review.
Hella, it looked like you had some thoughts on this too.
Yeah, I was gonna say something similar to what Charles said. I think typically when the board recommends that it goes to dab. The site review goes to dab before it is sent to the planning board. And you could express in your recommendation that that's what you're trying to do after the site review is filed. That dab review it before it's referred to you or before a decision is made.
Can I ask a question of Laura? Laura, what is it about the project that you would like to, that you feel would benefit from a dab review?
That's a great question, Sarah. A lot of the comments here tonight seem to be about architecture and design and why do you need this height and could you lower the roofs in some places and could you move, you know, the staff's recommendation to move the entrance and how the circulation on the site goes. And those seem to be the kind of things that dab has a lot of expertise in. And so my my sense is is that if the applicant goes through dab, the project that comes back to us will probably be improved. But I don't know what everybody else's sense is. I haven't done this for very long, so it might be that that's unnecessary.
So the last project, I think we asked dad to look like, look at, and I could be wrong, was the Presbyterian Church. Because it was, there were some very awkward components of it. I don't, I I'm happy to say yes to sending it to dab, but I don't personally feel like this needs to. I mean, I feel like the, the applicant's team has conceptualized a very interesting building that has some, that we have some questions about, but I can, I can't imagine they can't solve those design questions. Like I don't see anything about the building that's, this is my opinion. I don't see anything about the building that is so odd or awkward or off-putting or questionable that we would feel the need to send it to dab, but I'm happy to be overvoted if if folks feel like we should do that. I would, sorry.
Oops. What I was going to say is simply, I I think sometimes we've underutilized gap and and they might have gone a long time before reviewing a particular project, but I think that in consideration of the, it's not a small thing to gather your design team like tonight. And there's a, there's a, there's a burn rate that I think that we should take into consideration for the applicant and use dab when there are design problems that designed by committee might help to solve. And one of the things that I've never been a fan of is is designed by committee to just kind of try to make everyone happy. I think that, I think that that at times can actually dilute creativity and 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 excellence in design. So I I don't see a problem that dab could help solve in this particular application.
So I want to say I'm taking to heart what Mark and Sarah have just said that this might be a project that does not need dab's eye. And so I'd like to go back to where I think Charles was originally suggesting is that if the applicant is so inclined, they could take it to dab, but that we would not make that a recommendation of this board. So I withdraw my motion that I haven't made yet, but I'm not going to make it.
I'm going to add one more thing, just not to pile on, and I hope it doesn't feel that way, Laura, but just to offer context that this this particular design, in addition to being an interesting, and I think in many ways, good design, not that we don't have questions, not that we won't be interested to see where it goes, but it's much more fully baked than what we usually see a concept review. And so in a way that almost invites the possibility of sending to dab, but on the other hand, it also makes me feel reassured as other people have said that we've got a really strong design team with with a really interesting aesthetic and a valuable aesthetic. And I too fear the committee. I fear the committee does designing. I've done a lot of communications work and you bring too many people into the room and doesn't go anywhere good. So but yeah, I think part of it is that we have such a baked idea which we don't always have at concept review.
I appreciate that, Lisa. I do not feel piled on upon. I really appreciate everybody's perspective and I'm learning a lot from it. So I would say I am not going to make that motion and that we could leave it. It sounds like the applicant could take it to dab if they so choose. And if they don't feel that they need it, I'm perfectly happy to see it when it comes back to us that way.
Okay. I, unless anybody disagrees, I think we'll leave it there. And thank you. I think I'd like to actually congratulate the applicant here tonight. This was a very productive and a very useful review, I think, and they have done a beautiful job so far. And I encourage them to keep up the good work until we see it again. Thank you. So let's see, it's been an hour and a half since since our last break. You guys ready for another five minute break before we come back to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
I just, I just want to let my fellow board members, I'm, I'm, I'm still mid COVID. Unfortunately, my, my kids brought something home over the weekend. And I'm not feeling that up to it, so I might drop off now. So don't, please don't take offense to that, but I'm just, I'm all out of it. Appreciate it.
Oh.
George, really quick, George, 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 George. Um, we are going to be doing assignments for liaisons and ex officios. Do you want us to volunteer to?
I would, I would ask for a minimal time commitment. So yes, you can volunteer me for something, but please, I'd like a minimal time commitment just because landmarks was a, was a challenge this this year for me. So.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sounds like Greenways for George.
Yeah, well. All right, so let's come back at nine seventeen.
Hey Cindy, are you, um, are you there by any chance?
Yes, I am.
Um, so I have to get up tomorrow morning at three o'clock to get a very early plane. Um, so I don't think I'm gonna last much longer. Um, the, um, the, the only um assignment I'm actually interested in, if it's possible, would be to. Rejoin the site review, I'm sorry, the use review subcommittee.
We were gonna request you to do that.
I'd very much like to do it, so if I can just leave that in your hands. Um, and then I can go to bed, so I can actually get up and get to the airport tomorrow morning.
Sure, we are probably gonna have to put your name on something else. Um, everyone gets at least two. I mean, some, at least the other, I mean, the other one could be a backup.
Okay, yep. Uh, any, back me up, put me on any, I've already been on Hab and uh.
Design Advisory Board.
Landmarks, yeah, and I was on Greenways, but no, we had no meeting. Put me on Greenways again.
Okay.
Or just something would be fine.
Okay, great. Yeah, we were gonna, um, and just really quickly, I'll let you know about the use uh table. Um, you're gonna be kind of a liaison and um we need two volunteers and we wanted to have, ask you to be back. Um, and uh the time commitment is gonna be minimal. Um, we hope to start meeting again in a few weeks. Um, but we need the liaisons for the rest of the year through quarter one to work through the final module of the use tables. Um, it's gonna be focused on creating fifteen minute neighborhoods. The meetings will begin after we begin. After we bring forward phase two of the use tables work, formatting definitions, updates, et cetera, in July. Uh, the time commitment will be a few hours a month.
I can handle that.
Okay, and I'll repeat that for the board if anyone else is listening.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you, and I appreciate um you guys giving me this leeway, but if I don't go to bed now, I will miss my plane tomorrow morning.
Sure, sure. Have fun.
Thank you all. Good night.
Bye.
A good trip. Hmm, we're on the verge of losing our quorum here if we uh.
I know, we can't lose anybody else. So five.
Who else did we lose?
Sarah.
Oh.
She has a flight at three o'clock in the morning.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm yours for. The next hour, hour and a half, I will have trouble pushing past eleven.
I actually, John, if, at once we get started here, I'll let you start, but I, actually, I'll let you get started and then I have something. Have, I have.
Okay. Well, okay. All right, well, it's nine seventeen and uh we'll, uh, we'll start moving again. I can just inform. The rest of the board that we've lost George and Sarah. Uh, so, so you're it for a forum here. And I think Cindy has some information for us.
Well, um, yes, so um we're in matters and um the first matters item was just informational. So there's no presentation, no staff, anyone for that, so that's all uh information. So I'm gonna be talking about um the ex officio and liaison appointments tonight. And I'm gonna share my screen because I have the chart that I had emailed you all, so we can kind of go through it if you'd like. And we can talk about it and see who would like to um be on what liaison if you, if you so want to do that, John.
Okay, I, I think that's fine. Let's, let's just mention to everybody that the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Uh, is, is in tonight's uh material. And so we'll have a chance to talk with the park. Tell the folks what we think about that later on. I don't know when that would be scheduled for. But this is just so you can take a look at it and develop your thoughts and we'll have input at a later date. And I, I don't know what that date is.
I can, I can look that up and I can tell you under our calendar check when that will be.
Okay.
I've done a lot of moving around of parts in the last twenty four hours.
Yeah.
I don't, so I can certainly take a look. I've got our calendar up here, so I can go over that with you if you'd like.
Okay, well, we can do it now or later, whenever it's.
Let me take a look and see if I can find it real quick. Um.
So just to clarify for the Parks and Rec item, which um I read through, but would want to dig into more deeply. There's a presentation from staff tonight, but we're not taking any votes or anything. It's an informational item to update.
There's no presentation.
Oh, there's not even a presentation. Okay, great.
Just written material.
Awesome. So I'm not gonna be here till eleven is what I just heard. Yay.
And it's coming back to the board for a public hearing um on July nineteenth.
Okay, so don't forget about it before then, but you're off the hook for tonight. Okay, so next we have these uh ex officio and liaison appointments to make. Uh, and Cindy probably is in better control than anybody else about what they are and who's interested in what, so. Maybe, maybe you should run that discussion, Cindy.
Sure, I saw Laura raise her hand. Did you have a question, Laura?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just a little slow on the uptake here. Um, just newbie question, if it's under matters. Um, a, a, an item like the Parks and Recs Master Plan, does that always mean that it's just informational and there's no discussion or hearing or?
Not necessarily. No, sometimes there might be a presentation. Um, I think we did that like last month. We had one that had presentation. Um, sometimes they're just informational.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, you'll talk about all of our possibilities for further entertainment here.
Sure, sure. I'm gonna share my screen and it's going to, it's a kind of a, uh, it's the chart that I had emailed you earlier this, uh, or last week. I apologize. Um, and can you see my screen?
No.
No, I didn't think so. Oh, there it is.
Okay, we're seeing it.
Button was hiding. So these are the um. A couple of boards or several boards that we need actual ex officio and I'm finding, and I heard from, uh, last time we met from uh Hella that we actually. This isn't actually an ex officio. This is um. Just a liaison for dab. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There's the code for a housing advisory board and landmarks board. The code actually states that a planning board member. Attend and that's not true for design advisory board. That's just been the practice for a long time.
And you said that was for landmarks board as well?
No, landmarks board and housing advisory board are both code prescribed positions.
Okay. The Greenways is just a liaison as well?
Um.
I think that's more than a liaison, but they only meet.
Yeah, I think so too. I think, I think the Greenways Committee might not actually be in the code. Um, but that, yeah, I, I think there has to be an appointment.
Okay.
For that one as well.
I just realized I can't type on this, so I may, I have another chart over here on my. My other screen that I'm typing on. Um, so um. These names that are up here are, and the blanks are from last year. We, we usually reappoint every year. And so everyone gets a chance to do something every year and, and you can kind of change it up. Um, Sarah is going to stay in this position here for the use table liaisons, and I have a little information about that. Um, we usually like a, a main person and we like a backup. So let me give you a little bit of information real quickly about the use tables liaison, because we are gonna need a backup. Um, because we need two volunteers. Um, the time commitment is going to be minimal for that one. Uh, we hope to, they hope to start meeting again in a few weeks. Liaisons will be needed for the rest of the year through quarter one to work through the final module of the use tables work. And uh this focus on creating fifteen minute neighborhoods. The meetings will begin after we begin, after we bring forward phase two of the use table work. Um, which will be formatting, definition, updates, et cetera, in July. The time commitment will be a few hours a month. Um, so that's what that entails. Landmarks Board, they meet once a month. It's usually.
I can mention that the use table um activity is, is quite significant and important. It's one of the things that. Really has an impact on the way decisions are made and which decisions are made. So uh, just, just to let you know that it's a big deal.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think for that one, I think staff was anticipating to work with two board members. Um, not necessarily as a backup, but uh that's kind of how it's functioned so far, that two board members were pretty involved.
Well, yes, that, and that's what I meant, but we already have Sarah committed for the first name. Uh, for the, the, the first one. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying now. And then we do need another board member. That would also attend, so it wouldn't be a backup. Yeah, that's what helped. Uh, Emma.
Um, how are we going to, are we gonna go um board by board or how are we gonna, how, how are we gonna do this?
Well. May I suggest, Cindy, that for new board members, perhaps you could do a brief description of each before they put their names forward. You're probably already about to do that.
I was just about to do that. So um I'm just gonna go down the, the row here and, or the column and kind of explain what each one does. So the first one is landmarks board. They meet once a month. It's usually the first Wednesday of the month. And um they are a board of five. And you would be sitting in and you would go to each meeting as the, the head person and they would always need a backup for that. The backup doesn't have to go. And you're there to. Answer questions. Um, that sometimes they may want you to report something back. You may be asked to report something to them. Um, and it's, you, it's very, you learn a lot. It's, it's very interesting work. Um, House Advisory Board.
I can, I can just say for landmarks board, I, I was on it previous, you know, several years ago. And that's a board in which the, you play an active role, but you don't have a vote. In the outcome, but you're an active participant in the discussion.
Yeah, I forgot to say that you don't have a vote. And the Housing Advisory Board, very similar to land, I'm sorry, Lisa, did you have something?
Oh, I was just gonna say I was on landmarks two years ago, um, and really enjoyed it and just to add on to what um. Uh, what John was just saying that although you don't have an active vote, I found there were some meetings or I didn't have a whole lot to add. I didn't feel like I had a lot to add. And then there were times when they would, um, I would either have something I wanted to add or they would bring me forward as a member of planning board and invite. Me to share my thoughts and so on if they thought that that would be valuable to the discussion. So even though you aren't, you don't have a vote. Um, you know, I think they take the input from planning board seriously and appreciate having that, that person there and, and it. It is one of the ones I think that takes a bit more time because they are longer meetings sometimes than they are once a month, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the next one is Housing Advisory Board, one of our newer boards that I've been around now for three years. Um, but newer board, five members as well, or seven members, seven members. And they meet once a month as well. I don't have the date. I apologize. Um. I don't, I can't recall which date it is, but they do have a, a webpage. And uh very similar to landmarks board. You are there to um. Give your input, take input. Uh, you don't have a vote, but um you can learn a lot and you can, um, you might report out, you may um. Give, you know, a lot of times some, some projects cross over a lot, so you can make a lot of contacts with people. Um, learn, learn city staff. Um, but it, it can be timely. They can have long meetings as well. Uh, Greenways Committee meets once a year. And um, and. Maybe twice, I don't know, but usually just once a year. Um. So uh, I don't have a lot of information on them.
I was just gonna say, so I, I was the tab representative to the Greenways Committee this last year. Um, and I, I was the representative for two years in a row and Joe Taduji came to this last one and. Uh, it's, it's actually surprisingly important. All, and they do meet infrequently, but there was discussion with Joe. Uh, that in fact, uh, they might meet uh quarterly or at least twice a year and that um. There was actually more work to be done there than what had gone on for several years, when in fact, there really wasn't. Um, I, I don't want to use the word real. Anyway, there, there was not a department head assigned. Uh, from staff to the Greenways Committee. So anyway, it was founder-ing for a little bit and I think that uh has changed. I hope so.
Great, well, thanks for that. Um, the Design Advisory Board um is a, a board of five members. They meet once a month as well, the second Wednesday of the month. I'm the board secretary for that board. And um. Again, it's, it's very similar to the other landmarks board have you, uh, it's very interesting. It, um, I learn a lot as the secretary and they have in-depth discussions about projects and um. You may not, uh, I mean, you get to input, you get, you certainly. Report back, you may report back, you definitely will report back to planning board and um, and it's very interesting, very fascinating. Um, their meetings are starting, they don't meet, they, they're supposed to meet every month, but a lot of times they're at projects. So they may not necessarily meet every month. We haven't met since February, I don't think. And um, so it just depends on if our projects to meet on. The use table liaisons, I already mentioned that. The Code Amendment Group, um, Hella, is that still?
Well, that's a good question.
I don't think we ever met.
Sorry.
Or, or did I just fail to show up? I don't remember meeting.
It was, yeah, if Lisa was on there, then um, then that's a good question. So Carl Geiler and Lisa Hudy. Um, are the code amendments specialists of, of the department. And I wonder if we created a liaison so that there was somebody. Um, that they could consult with on the different code amendment projects that are coming in. Um, but maybe haven't taken advantage of it. If you don't assign anybody right now, I guess if the need. If, if a need comes up, we could assign somebody then.
Sure.
Now I'm sad that I didn't get to hang out with Carl and talk about code. It's okay.
And I, do we still need East Boulder Working Group?
Yeah, that, that turned out to be quite a bit of time, but it's uh, I think it's reaching a conclusion pretty soon. Depending on how things go in next week with uh, with council and, and ourselves, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I think we leave John's name there and he gets to go to the party.
Well, Laura, you'll get to go by virtue of your participation also.
I'm looking forward to partying with you, John.
So we could assign people to that, people could volunteer. And we'll see what happens with those.
I think for East Boulder Working Group, we leave John on and we put Laura as backup and then hopefully they just go. But don't feel like that means you can't go on other things because you're on that one. But I just think that we resolve East Boulder.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, Lisa. According to staff, we have met for the last time as a working group, except for to have the celebration once the plan's adopted, so.
Okay.
And similar for code amendment, I don't know how John feels, but I'm perfectly happy to remain as potential liaison should there be a need for a planning board member. Unless someone else wants that. Um, but yeah, I, I can stay there and then potentially. But yeah, I, I can stay there and then potentially be somewhere else as well, but we could just. Leave it as a holding space in case we're needed, I guess, unless someone wants to advocate for being on there, which is fine too.
I would not want to stand between you and your opportunity to hang out with Carl.
We mostly just get into really nerdy topics that have nothing to do with planning, which is maybe why it's good we have a meeting.
Okay, so. George, I know he wanted to do something very time minimal. Should we? Voluntold him to, um, greenways?
Yeah, I think that's, uh. In what's as possible.
And, and I just looked at the housing advisory board. They meet on Wednesdays. And right now it looks like it's scheduled out that way for the rest of the year. I know some boards are changing their schedule because council is gonna. Well, planning board is changing, it's changing its schedule from Thursday to Tuesdays and it looks like they may be. Which keeping Wednesdays, at least according to the city's calendar.
ML.
Um. I. Will offer to be the second person on the use table.
Okay, great.
I will volunteer that timewise, well, I've already served on landmarks, so I wouldn't serve on landmarks again. Um, I hesitate to commit to be first for either hab or dab. But potentially I could be backup, so I'm just volunteering that I'm probably not stepping up for hab or dab and I've already served on landmarks, so. It seems like that should perhaps go to someone else.
What, what is still open? Is it, is it just landmarks and hab and dab?
I will, why don't I give you an update here?
I didn't mention also that we used to have a, uh. Liaison to grab water resources advisory board after there was some quite, uh. Bitter complaints that they were feeling ignored. And I, I, I did that. And, uh, last year. The decision was made not to have an official liaison to rap, but I've kept. Since then, just, uh, to listen to what's going on. Partly because of professional interest, I'm a, a water engineer. But, uh, also in response to their concern about, uh, no one else paying attention to them. And I'd like to continue doing that actually, and whether or not it becomes an official liaison from. From planning board to them, or whether I just do it as a private citizen.
You're muted, Lisa.
I mouthed fun hobby.
I respect that.
I, I think grab matters, water, I mean, especially right now, yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to make it in a, you know, in a, uh, the designation along with the rest of these, but, uh. It depends on what the majority here thinks.
Well, who, who's left who hasn't taken one? Is there just three of us? Cause there are three significant. Time commitment open spots here with landmarks and hab and dab.
So typically what we've done historically and stop me if I'm getting this wrong, but. Each planning board member will be first somewhere and second somewhere. Um, or maybe it's not quite each, but most people will be first and then second somewhere. Um, so, um. Yeah, so there's opportunity for everyone to have something that they're first on.
I think that, um, on the use table, if I understood, uh, Hella correctly. Um, both people are required to participate fully.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're basically both first, yeah.
Right.
Well, if, go ahead, Mark.
I was just gonna say, so I, I think that one way to move this along would be if anyone wants something, they should just say it. And get it out there.
What do you want, Mark?
I, I don't. I, I, I wanna go second, but I, I, I'm, I'm willing to do many different things, but. I, I was just advocating that if, if someone said, boy, I really, you know. Like housing, I really like landmarks, whatever, they should, they should make that known.
Yeah, I, I chose use tables.
That's okay, good.
I'll go next to spare you, Mark, cause this is an act of kindness on my part. Uh, I will volunteer to be first on hab. And if nobody objects, I would be second on dab.
Don't hear any objections.
So that, that kind of leaves me there, so I'm going to say, um, I'll take, uh. First on dab. Unless, unless ML, you wanted to do double duty and be on dab as well.
No, I actually, um, I, I, I go for backup on landmark.
Okay, so I, I do have a question on dab. In that. The board itself is made up entirely of design professionals, correct? There's not any, uh. Plain old regular folk.
Not real people.
Mark, you are not plain old regular folk. I object.
Well, I, if, if it's not a problem to have the, uh, design amateur on, on dab, I'll go ahead and take that.
Well, I, I was on doing the dab liaison before and, uh, it worked out fine.
Okay.
All right, this is what we have right now.
So I think, and I don't think this means we necessarily can't do it again, but I think both John and I have served as. As representatives landmarks previously. Has Sarah, I don't want to voluntold her, but has Sarah served? As primary in landmarks?
Oh, let me look at, I gotta look it up.
She's the primary on the tables also.
I know, but that doesn't mean she can't be primary on two. You get for leaving.
Well, the code amendment and the East Boulder Working Group, we think are not really.
Yes, but I've already served on landmarks.
Those are light duty.
Light duty.
So I'll probably back up, maybe have, I haven't ever done have, well, I was back up for have and I never ended up going because Georgie was so diligent. So I'd be happy to back up have again. Or greenways, but I know that's a light left, either one of those two, I could be second.
Okay, I, I guess I, I could be second on housing advisory board.
Sarah was on landmarks board back in, um, nineteen.
I thought you were gonna keep going and I was like nineteen ninety.
Nineteen what?
I'll be second on greenways and then John is gonna be second on housing and landmarks has nobody.
We're not miss, I think, uh, uh, because ML's on use tables, it looks like she's missing, but she's not.
Okay.
Cause that's, she's gonna have to go to every meeting. I mean.
The code amendment and the East Boulder Working Group aren't really.
Well, the, the use tables is, says it's only gonna be, it's gonna be a few hours a month, so. I don't know, I, I, I.
But we all have to attend it. Is that correct?
Right, they said.
And it'll finish first quarter, right?
Right.
Oh. Well, I've already put my name out there twice.
Yeah, you have, so you're fine.
I mean, it sounds like almost everybody here has been the rep to landmarks, right? Mark, you've done it, John, you've done it. Sarah has done it. Lisa, have you also done landmarks?
No, I, I have, I have not done landmarks.
You haven't lived yet.
Well, I, look, if, 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 um. If, uh. If it, if it, if it's preferable that I go to landmarks, all right. I, I can, I can do that.
Well, John, actually. Even though you're first on East Boulder Working Group, that may not be a thing anymore.
Yeah, I was on landmarks previously.
Which one haven't you been on, John? This is kind of, you know, potentially your last year. Is there anything you really want? You might be able to kick somebody off of theirs, not like in a mean way, but because you're our chair and you're about to be rotating out.
I, I mean, I haven't thought of code amendment group or, uh. Housing advisory board. Those are the two that I haven't been on, I guess.
Laura, how would you feel about if, if John is interested in it, would you be upset by him taking? The hab spot this time and you being backup and then you ticking first on either landmarks or dab if Mark is willing to switch?
John, you can certainly have hab if that is what you would like in your last year. Would you like to be the hab liaison?
Wow, they're gonna eat me alive, but okay.
They're pretty nice.
Okay, so that leaves me that I'm the person who needs to, to take something. Mark, would you prefer dab or landmarks?
Yeah, is my preference, but I, but you know what? I tell you what, I would, what we could do is, um, if I backed up landmarks. And you backed up dab and we could just work out schedule wise, uh, how that, you know. I, I'm, I'm thinking about summer vacation, these stuff and everything and, you know, anyway, so, uh, that, that might work out if we just. Back each other up and, uh.
You know, I, I, I think they probably want someone who's pretty consistent, so I, I can take landmarks. It'll, it'll be good for my soul. It, it's not, it's not something that I have ever, um, gotten deeply into, so it'll be a good opportunity for me.
But then I think Laura, next round, you get to remind us all that you did this and you get to say.
You know, I don't want landmarks to feel, I don't want landmarks to feel, um, neglected or anything. I'm sure landmarks is a wonderful board. And it just, it hasn't been on my radar yet, so I'm gonna enjoy landmarks very, very much.
All right, broaden your education.
We still have some blank spaces, so.
Okay, I need a backup on housing advisory board.
Mark, did you say you wanted to be backup on?
Okay, okay, I missed that one.
And then Lisa, do you need a backup on code amendment? Or it sounds like that's never really been activated.
It hasn't been active. I think if we put anyone back up because Georgie also requested a lighter load, I would put him on there. Cause he's only up once.
All right, so, show you what you, what I got. That looks very good one.
Looks good to me.
But Sarah's all, also only on one time, which is probably fine. I think that's just kind of a function of us ha- having seven people in however many spots. But I just wanted to mention it.
It looks like. Oh, you know, that's because ML and Sarah are both primary on use tables. That's why that worked out that way.
Oh, I see. My name should be in the other column. We need a backup. They want everybody to show up every time though.
Yeah, it seems like you wouldn't need a third person standing at the ready. As long as one of you is there, it's okay, but having both of you is their preference every time. I think we're good. I'm sure Sarah has, has done her time, uh, in many, many ways.
Great, I'll send this out to everyone. So we have, everyone remembers.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other matters from hello or?
So, so for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, there, there's nothing required of us tonight. It was just in the packet for us to take a look at and it'll come back around in July.
Right.
Oh, okay. Can I ask a favor that if that is the case in the future? Cause I, I really, really crammed to get through that for this meeting. I did not understand that there was not gonna be any need to have that information necessarily tonight. So i- if that happens in the future, could you let us know if there's something that is in our packet that's a needy thing that we don't actually have to prepare for, for a certain night?
I would agree. I also, um, rearranged schedules and crammed and made notes and was. Ready for bear tonight.
You're ahead.
We're, we're learning, we're learning.
I just wanted to give you a few updates on the calendar, um, just some reminders, um. We have a meeting Tuesday night. With council. You will be virtual, the council will be in person. And, um, I will send out the link to you probably Tuesday morning. I don't get the link until then, so that's when the link will go out. And, um. So.
Um, will the. East Boulder sub-community plan potentially be different from the one that is? Out there?
The one that we reviewed, uh, a couple of weeks ago. I think there are minor differences.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't on the board, but, um, I'm just curious, will it be a different one or is it gonna be the same one?
The plan that the board saw a couple of weeks ago or so was a ninety percent version. So now council and planning board are both gonna look at it for adoption. So there probably have been some changes to it based on the feedback that the board and council provided to the ninety percent plan. And then to adopt it, both council and planning board have to adopt it, so if. If you review it and you want a change to be made, then both council and planning board. Have to ultimately agree to those changes. It's gotta be a matching.
Right.
Plan that's adopted.
But we won't get to see it until Tuesday morning, did you say?
No, you have the packet now.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Tuesday.
Just the link.
The link, yeah.
There are, there are a couple, and they're pretty small, but they are changes from when we reviewed it before.
And I find that packet. You, you sent it to us?
I've sent you the link, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Can I ask a question to Hella? I, I wanna just clarify what you just said. I, I get that the, the adopted plan has to be the same from planning board and city council. So how does that work? If, if, when we meet, we meet first, right? So we meet jointly to get. The presentation and the public hearing, and then there's no discussion after that, the meeting ends. And then planning board has its own separate meeting where we do our discussion. Like there's no presentation, no hearing, we've already had that, but we just do a discussion, right? And if we suggest changes, then do those changes get incorporated before it goes to city council? Or is it that when it goes to city council, they consider the plan as written? And then they separately consider the changes that we have suggested? Like, do we have to adopt something and then that changes what city council looks at?
Um, I think, you know, you, you could describe the changes that you wanted to be made. And then staff could incorporate that and then present it to council for adoption and then council looks at the whole package. And, um. And decides whether or not to adopt it. And if council changes something from what you looked at or what you approved, then it would come back to the planning board. Until both voted on to approve.
All in one, all in like a back and forth serial meeting. Is that correct?
Well, but it's public. It's not a serial meeting because it's public.
Well, not, I, I, I mean, not serial in the sense of.
Right.
It's happening.
Continuation.
Yeah, there are new, new meetings. Or continued meetings, but would be scheduled at that point in time.
So if we make changes, then that is the version that council can adopt. If they choose to make changes to what we adopt and they adopt something different. It has to come back to us until we agree, right? And if, if we don't agree with council. Then we could kick it back to them and back and forth like that, if we wanted to be difficult, which of course, nobody here would ever be difficult, right? But. Which, of course, nobody here would ever be difficult, right? But.
What do you think your purpose here is?
To be a rubber stamp. That's what I am, John. Clearly, you know me well enough.
I also wanted to let you know that um there's a lot of, I sent out an email or a couple of days ago. Giving you a big long schedule of the next meetings. And what the I, and that, what the items you were gonna be looking at for the next couple of months. And wanted to assure you that the ordinance to update the site review criteria is a standalone. Item for the night of the May nineteenth, all by itself. When I originally sent you the email, there were a couple of other items attached to it, but I was still in the process of moving things around and waiting on. Okays from other people and but we finally got the okay to move some things, so it is all by itself on a meeting. On the night, uh yeah, nineteen twenty.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I should know this, but what's the topic of the Joint Advisory Board meeting on the twenty third of June?
It is, you don't have to know that. Um, it is Cool Boulder. They're gonna be discussing the new program that came out. Yeah, climate. And um it's gonna be in person. Um, we're looking at, we've already reserved the OSBT hub. I think they're on um.
Fifty fifth, something like that.
Great, yeah, something like that. So we're working on getting everyone to be there in person. And uh all the boards, so it's gonna be with EAB, Prab, OSBT, and you guys. So, nope, I don't, I, we're not gonna have any public though, but it's it's gonna be, you know, we'll zoom and stuff, so. Um, and I'm still getting information about going back in person. Things change every day. So. I'm still waiting.
Sounds, if if council is willing to show up on Tuesday in person, maybe we're next, who knows?
Well, it's it's a process. Um, they did not want to cram the dais. You know, we've done joint meetings before, John, you've been a part of that, you know. And you guys are sitting literally shoulder to shoulder, sometimes overlapping each other, and they didn't want to do that for a joint meeting. They just didn't wanna to do that. And uh so that's why it's only council and you guys are virtual. And that's all I got.
All right, any any other? Things to talk about? Okay. Do we need to debrief about how this went tonight? Are you satisfied or do you see ways to improve? Okay. Let's call it over. I moved to adjourn. I still move to adjourn.
Beat me to it, Mark. Take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you.